Please.
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Kavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
abstaining.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And can I have a motion to approve our agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Ms. Aller, when you're ready.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Kavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Right. We are actually going to do some recognitions tonight. It's a little out of, out of the ordinary for us, but I will turn it over to Mrs. Donner.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Tonight, we are excited to recognize students and staff from our high school theater programs for their accomplishments this year. First, the Lafayette High School Theater Team has achieved a remarkable series of victories this year. Lafayette won first place in the Virginia Theater Association One Act State Competition, Virginia Theater Festival State Competition, VHSL One Act State Competition, and the VHSL One Act Competition. Their hard work, dedication, and exceptional performances led by Suzanne McCory have earned them well-deserved recognition. Congratulations to the entire team for their outstanding achievements. Though not every student could join us this evening, we will announce each of the recipients in acknowledgement of their wonderful accomplishments. Please come forward to be recognized as your name is called. Tabitha Anderson, Shelby Braddock, Dylan Copeland, Kaylee Dellinger, Clark Gaspar, Claudia Gilbert, Rachel Herrick, Hadley Holland, Judah Horrell, James Hubbard, Malik Kadron, Parker King, Dylan Knowlton, J.D. Lawrence, Presley Lewis, Taylor Ann Mason, Alana Mickles, Jocelyn Monte, Raleigh Pete, Elliot Rickard, McCarthy Smith, Lyra Swaddle, Quentin Troubridge, Madison Walk, Shane Weaver, Ashton Whitaker, Matthew Whitehurst, Cy Wright, Jack Seis. Thank you all. And we'd also love Mrs. McCory to please come up.
Ever do your picture. This is the real one.
Warhill High School also secured two notable victories this year, achieving first place in their class at both the VHSL One Act Super Regional Competition and the VHSL One Act State Competition. Under the outstanding leadership of Jacob Noble, the team's hard work and dedication have earned them well-deserved accolades. Congratulations to the entire group for their remarkable successes. Please step forward to receive your recognition when called. Reagan Carmine, M. Connors, Jack Crank, Riley Delano, Corsha Dur, Alex Fagerland, Maria Cucina or Cucina. Okay.
Get a special photograph. I think we've just had Warhill students up.
Well, I will read all the Warhill again, just because they're fantastic and right? Shouldn't we hear about them twice?
I think they may still be outside, but I'm not sure, but.
So they've got your certificates already?
I have all the certificates.
Right.
It's just somewhere trickling in.
They kill it if it comes to me? Can my shoe out?
Their names have been called and they've had the photograph already. One is stuck in traffic spot, hasn't arrived, so it may have to be next year.
It's scary.
Go ahead, write it back.
Somebody kill it?
They may come next time.
So on the, see where it says A. Light?
We want to make sure that all of our.
Thank you.
A work meeting.
Clearly, we have ended school like the last two weeks. We can't pull together. The viewing public, there was a loss that the court members were dodging, and Mr. Riffle killed it for us. So thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Of course. These thrift-worth shoes are, remember something, yeah.
We're gonna rewind, and we're gonna do the Warhill again, so.
Okay, so read the names.
Just that we can read all of the names. Warhill High School was, also secured two notable victories this year, achieving first place in their class at both VHSL One Act Super Regional Competition and the VHSL One Act State Competition. Under the outstanding leadership of Jacob Noble, the team's hard work and dedication have earned them well-deserved accolades. Congratulations to the entire group on their remarkable successes. Please step forward to receive your recognition when called, and we have already been able to recognize many of those students. We want to make sure that all names are called. Reagan Carmine, M. Connors, Jack Crank, Ryan Delano, Corsha Dur, Alex Fagerland, Maria Cucina, Amelia Malone, Gabrielle Moreno, Atticus Martin, Joshua Meadows, Amaya Neely, Emily Newell, Ryan Norton, Stephen Raines, Ashley Remmert, Robin Rice, Abby Robinson, Ava Sherid, Gracie Schrader, Casey Swanberg, and Chip Walker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Now, we will turn it over to Dr. Heron for Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations to the Jamestown High School Envirothon Team. They are off to the international competition in Geneva, New York this summer after placing first in the state competition. This accomplishment showcases their dedication to environmental science and teamwork. We look forward to recognizing the team at our June 18th meeting. Join us on Wednesday, June 12th, as the class of 2024 parades down the Duke of Gloucester Street, starting at 5:30 p.m. Graduating students from all high schools who have RSVP'd will participate in the parade, so we encourage students to RSVP as soon as possible. Spectators are invited to line up along Dog Street to cheer on our graduates. Finally, we'll end our week, next week, with our formal graduation ceremonies at the William and Mary Caplin Arena on Friday, June 14th. For those who cannot attend, all graduations will be broadcast on Channel 47 and livestreamed on YouTube. For direct access to YouTube livestreams, visit wjccschoolsdoc.org on graduation day. Congratulations to all of our students for their hard work and dedication this year, and a special congratulations to our graduating seniors. We look forward to celebrating with you next week. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And we will now move on to our proposed agenda items. Items.
Madam Chair, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. A, a report?
A report to give.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Madam Chair, I also have one.
Oh, okay.
New Horizons had its meeting last Tuesday, and we finalized the budget for New Horizons also. Just to give the board an update, they continued with the 3% pay raise for next year, and they also continued with the 2% pay raise that started earlier this year in January. So it basically is a 5% pay raise. And New Horizons is also covering or absorbing the 6% increase in health premiums for its employees for next year. And the total budget for Williamsburg James City County, or payment that we would have for New Horizons, is $2,355,643, which is an increase of $188,282. And I think this was the number that was provided earlier. I think they stuck with that. Just to give you some numbers for New Horizons, right now the Special Education section for New Horizons, or at least for next year, will have 264 students. The Governor's School will have, will remain at 180 students maximum, and the Career and Technical Education Program will have 1,138 students for next year. To give you an idea of what Williamsburg James City County is for those schools, New Horizons received 1,955 applications for the Career and Technical Education Program, again, for only 11, 1138 spots, so there's gonna be approximately 800 students that are not gonna be able to attend. Williamsburg James City County had 280 students apply for those positions, which is an increase of 235 students from last year. For the Governor's School, there's 143 students who, that are attending the Governor's School, so there's a shortfall that the Governor's School has, because they have a maximum capacity of 180 students. And for Williamsburg James City County, there's 29 applicants this year, up from 24 from last year. What New Horizons also does, they also honored some, they had a lot of different academic teams or student teams that competed in state competitions. Multiple teams finished first and second within the state. I'm only gonna mention the ones from Williamsburg James City County, because we would be here for a while for me to, to announce all of them. But we had Evan Jeffries placed first out of Warhill, and he was in the Cisco Networking Competition. There is Rita Potash or Podash from Warhill also. She was placed first within a team of welding. They, they came and gave us a presentation where the three of them would get together, they would have an assignment, and then they would have to basically perform that assignment during the competition. They didn't know what the assignment was gonna be, but they had to go through all the different steps for that competition. Again, they had placed first. And Ms. Nakia, or not, excuse me, Nakia Stanley from Jamestown, she placed first in the state in nail care. So we had a lot of students from Williamsburg James City County that competed, and they are all going on to the national competitions. I believe it's this week or next week down in Florida. So we could all have some good prayers and say some, have some good thoughts for them to do well in their competitions. Part of the things also with, with the budget that they, they came back and talked about is they're, they're replacing, starting to replace some of their vehicles, starting to replace some of their air conditioning units, starting to replace some of their, their roofing materials, sort of like what we are. Their vehicles are 20 years old, and so they're just getting around to replacing them. They're gonna, and everything's gonna be staggered. So I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. And Mr. Riffle?
Great, thank you. Dr. Heron and I entered the Heretta Education Advisory Committee, which is the governing board for WHRO's Board of Elections, or their board. So we had an organizing part of the section of the meeting, so we elected a new chair, which is Brittany Walker from Chesapeake, and then a vice chair from, this gentleman from Virginia Beach who escapes my, my name right now, so.
Mr. Callen.
Thank you. See, this is why we go together, yeah. And then we also voted on four additional members to their board. Some people are coming off, and there are, I think, four additional. So I read those names. It's Dr. Theo Kramer, he's the superintendent for Mile White, Dr. Carl DeVor, the medical director of Evilland's Healthcare, Dr. Charles Ford, professor of history at Norfolk State University, and then Dr. Scott Miller, president of Virginia Wesleyan. We approved, our board approved them to join the board. We also had a, a quick introduction from their new chair, and then they gave a presentation on the General Assembly, which I felt right at home. I'm hearing from Joel Andrus. And then they did a couple of dates about this kind of the status of their budgetary stuff, and it's pretty healthy board, as I mentioned in my last report from now. They, everyone, it's a pretty dues-paying body, so we are paying to this program to get the services from WHRO. They gave a report on how much of the services are being used in the Education Services Report by Mr. Elmer Stewart. They talked about this tremendous amount of people using the vehicles and, and the, the resources available through the WHRO platform, and then the number of people who are, are using their online, the e-media website, which I mentioned previously as well. So as we get to the end of the year, we, it's kind of similar kind of trend they say, is trying to find things to do in school and to kind of keep students engaged for re-reviewing curriculum and things like that. So it was a great meeting, and it was a good lunch. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Okay. Anybody else? Now we will move on to item 6.01, review revisions to the 2024-25 Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual event, and Dr. Brown will lead us in this conversation about the updated Student Code of Conduct this evening.
Good evening, School Board, School Board Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Each year, the Department of Special, Special Student Services brings recommended revisions to the Student Code of Conduct for your consideration and approval. Last year, the committee completed extensive work aligning the Student Code of Conduct with the changes in the state reporting requirements that became effective for the 23-24 school year. This year, we took that framework and continued the work of aligning WJCC practices with recommendations and guidance from the Virginia Positive and Preventative Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternatives to Suspension. Tonight, you've been provided the 24-25 Code of Conduct redline copy and the 24-25 Code of Conduct draft. These items will be noted throughout the presentation. The committee met five times between January 10th and March 6th of this year. The committee consisted of counselors, school administrators, student advancement coaches, parents, members of Special Education, and student services, and they brought forward the proposed changes on the following slides. It is important to note that these changes focus on bringing clarity to the Student Code of Conduct for staffs, family, and students. The Student Code of Conduct is organized into three sections. The first section provides general information. As such, we annually update the welcome letter, school year dates, school board member names and roles, and the table of contents. The page numbers on the table of contents in the draft will be finalized after all changes are accepted prior to publishing. The next area to note is centered on the topic of attendance. While each student is expected to be at school and ready to learn each school day, the school division recognizes that there are instances where students may need to be absent from school. Regarding the attendance matters page, the committee agreed to make an addition under the communication which reads, "The letter will be sent home as students approach a threshold for chronic absenteeism," whether it is excused or unexcused. The committee felt that this better represented current division practices and provided clarity on the type of communication that a parent might receive as they approach the threshold for chronic absenteeism, which is specific, excuse me, to the time of year that absences are accumulated. The committee felt that the following changes in the area of bullying provide a better understanding of what behaviors are considered bullying as defined under the Code of Virginia. The Code of Virginia has specific qualifying behaviors that must be present to be considered bullying. By numbering these specific criteria, the committee felt that the document better informs the reader of how schools determine if bullying is founded or may constitute peer-to-peer conflict or rate or mean actions. Please note that the amended language does not change our existing practice within WJCC. The committee worked with WJCC's Transportation Department to help bring the following proposed changes. The first change that you will see is that students are directed to report at least 10 minutes before their scheduled pickup. This proposed change was based on a request from the Transportation Department to reflect the current requests for parents. Additional language was added to help reinforce expectations for safe bus riding. And additionally, language in this, in what is required for students requesting bus changes provides a reminder that a written permission of from a parent to change buses is subject to review and is not automatically approved. Bus drivers will not admit students onto the bus at the school without the appropriate forms. An area of technology that warrants updating is the student use of artificial, artificial intelligence tools. The committee received feedback from our technology team. As a result, an added, added change to the SPAR category, "Behaviors That Impede Academic Progress 3" was made. Artificial intelligence is a tool, as we want our students to utilize AI appropriately. This addition does not change the SPAR category, rather provides further clarification on what can constitute scholastic dishonesty if a student were to utilize AI in an unauthorized manner. Behavior is addressed across five levels of administrative responses, with level one addressing less serious behaviors to level five addressing the most serious. When an administrator processes a discipline referral and determines the appropriate level, they refer to the Code of Conduct to apply the discipline. For example, a student who is referred for not going to their assigned class could be assigned a level one or level two administrative response. The proposed revisions on this slide now show administrative responses that are specific to level one. The strike-throughs are proactive or restorative interventions that have been moved to a new page that can be considered across multiple levels and not just level one. This will be highlighted in an upcoming slide. The committee felt that this change provided clear communication about the potential disciplinary considerations that administration has when utilizing the Code of Conduct. To provide you another example of this type of change, this is level four behaviors. These are behaviors that require potential long-term suspension and/or alternative placement. In the 23-24 version, you will see that parent-administrator-teacher-student behavior contract has a strike-through. That's because this is a potential intervention for level four, but it's not an actual disciplinary response an administrator can consider. As such, the committee felt that this could produce confusion or miscommunication, and that an administrator could select an administrative conference with the parent and leave an out-of-school suspension as a disciplinary response for a level four. The committee agreed that this new page provides a list of considerations that schools, parents, and students can have in addition to the discipline that's been assigned. For example, if we look at a student who's received a level one disciplinary action and received a consequence of a verbal warning for demonstrating off-task behavior in a classroom, this page would provide considerations for all parties involved that could help better address the reason for the off-task behavior, and this could include, but is not limited to, an administrative conference with the student. Another example is a student that may have received a short-term suspension, a level three, by engaging in a verbal confrontation. While the student may receive an out-of-school suspension, this page can help share with all parties impacted by that suspension to consider additional supports that are needed. One consideration is to submit a referral for behavioral intervention specialists to observe that student. The purpose of these additions are to communicate that while we aim to provide consistent disciplinary practices, we must continue to strive to address the functions of behaviors and identify supports that are needed to better meet the needs of our students. You will see that the updates in the following, in these policies, are updating the Code of Conduct to address the updates that have been conducted since the last time that the Code of Conduct was reviewed in June of last year. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Hosang and, or Mrs. Hunley?
I was just wondering, has there ever been a time when students were on the, I don't know, the board, the committee, just to, or is that not good? Because I was just curious.
I don't think it's, I think it would be productive to have a student on there. I know that our, our focus is to get as many parents as possible. That has been challenging. We did have one parent who accepted and wasn't able to commit to that, and through another committee I'm on, I was able to talk another parent into joining the committee. I, I do feel like there are opportunities to, with the Code of Conduct, to get student feedback. That was not done in this.
Right, in this one, but I would.
But I do think it's.
Investigate that for the future. Thank you.
Mr. Hosang?
Are there any changes from this year to next year regarding the excused/unexcused absences, and what would constitute both of those?
So that is not covered in the Code of Conduct, our policy JED. No, sir?
Mrs. Donner, did you have a question? Mr. Riffle?
Just a point to the students being involved. I think it'd be a good, I, I sit on the Student Advisory Committee. It'd be great to actually maybe incorporate some type of activities into that. It's, I think it'd be more productive use of our time in the committee, because this is stuff that is, they have warranties about, and they actually have to deal with this in day-to-day life, you know. I don't sit in school, you know.
Well, and I know that schools at the beginning of the year go recode of conduct with students. I do think there could perhaps be increased conversations with students about what it means to them, and especially with the intervention supports they may need. So I agree, yeah.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Dr. Brown? No? Okay. We will move on to item 6.02. We'll review the 2024-25 federal program grant applications for titles one, two, three, and four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring this to the board also and present the plan for the use of title funds, and Ms. Ford will present the information this evening.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, I am pleased to present an overview of the grant applications for the federal programs Title 1, 2, 3, and 4 for the 2024-25 school year. To begin, I will provide an overview of each grant. Title 1 provides personnel and resources that supplement academic programming in the identified Title 1 schools. Title 2 supports training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. Title 3 supports language instruction for students with limited English proficiency, and Title 4 provides funds for programs and activities to improve students' academic achievement. State funding of the grants is formula-based and includes factors such as student enrollment and low-income data. Based on guidance from the grant specialist at the Virginia Department of Education, applications are typically written assuming level funding, using the current year's allocation. When the state releases the updated allocation amounts in the fall, school divisions submit application amendments to adjust for the final allocation amounts. In the case of the 24-25 Title 1 application, the state has already released preliminary allocations, resulting in a slight decrease in the budget we used to design the application. Title 1 Part A funding provides, Title 1 Part A provides funding to support programming to ensure all children have access to equitable and high-quality instruction and learning experiences, so they may meet the state's academic achievement standards. The Title 1 program supplements literacy and math instruction at seven of the nine elementary schools in WJCC. At the targeted assistance schools, shown here in blue, Title 1 staff and services support children in grades kindergarten through third. And in the school-wide programs, at James River, Matthew Whaley, and Norwich, all students, families, and staff in grades K through 5 benefit from Title 1 programming. families, and staff in grades K through five benefit from Title I programming. Title I programming in WJCC prioritizes the use of federal grant funds for direct services to students. Ninety-four percent of our Title I funds are allocated to 13 full-time positions. Title I positions include seven literacy interventionists, one at each Title I school. There are two math interventionists in the school-wide programs at James River and Matthew Whaley. In this year's upcoming application, we propose hiring a third Title I math intervention teacher to be placed in the newest school-wide program at Norwich Elementary. During the school year, grant funding has also provided the support of 24 tutors in our seven Title I schools. In addition to school-based staff, the grant also partially funds division positions, including my role as Title I coordinator, two literacy instruction coaches, and the federal program's data analyst position. Other Title I priorities include providing professional development that will support our teachers with job embedded training and coaching to strengthen their evidence-based instructional practices. Title I programming also emphasizes supporting families and parents to be actively involved in their children's education through parental involvement programming and the provision of high-quality learning tools for use at home. I am pleased to share that this year, the Title I staff have led 23 division and school-based Title I parent and family engagement events and activities. Title II has multi-tiered purposes, including increasing student achievement consistent with challenging state academic standards, improving the quality and effectiveness of teachers and leaders, increasing the number of teachers and leaders who are effective in improving student academic achievement in our schools, and providing low-income and minority students greater access to effective teachers, principals, and other school leaders. The primary focus for our use of Title II funding is to support recruitment, training, and preparation of highly qualified teachers and leaders. The main focus for this application's funding will be positions. Title II funds will provide partial funding for the elementary literacy coordinator, secondary math coordinator, K-12 science coordinator, and the federal program's data analyst. It will also provide full funding to support the new position of organization development specialist. We proposed this position because over the past five years, there has been a significant increase in the number of new hires in the division. Additionally, the number of provisionally licensed teachers within our new hire pool continues to grow. This position will play an essential role in the onboarding and development of new educators and will collaborate with division leaders to facilitate a comprehensive support system and personalized professional learning to meet their unique needs. The position will also assist with designing, implementing, and monitoring professional learning programs across the division. Federal and state regulations require that students who have a native language other than and are not fully proficient in English be provided with specific English language instruction and other programmatic services to ensure they attain proficiency in English and meet the same rigorous academic state standards as their age-appropriate peers. Title III funding is used to supplement local funds to support this specialized instruction. Additionally, Title III funds are also used to provide high-quality professional learning for educators who serve our multilingual learners and to meaningfully engage those students' families in our school community. It is our proposed plan to continue to utilize the Title III funds in a manner consistent with the division initiatives to serve our multilingual learners. To that end, Title III funds support the implementation of the Elevation Platform, an integrated information and instructional learning management system specifically designed to meet the needs of educators serving multilingual learners, and the Imagine Learning Platform, a computer-based suite of individualized adaptive instructional experiences designed to enrich the language acquisition of our students. We also intend to fully, we also intend to utilize funds to support our language instruction summer enrichment program, as well as our multilingual learner parent resource center, our family learning workshop series, and community outreach programs such as the Welcome to Williamsburg events, LEAP parent pop-up academies, and Summer Nights in the Grove. Due to the growing population of our multilingual learners, our team has opted to transfer Title IV funds to the Title III program to increase support for multilingual learner instruction, resources, family engagement, and provide partial funding for the multilingual learner family and community engagement coordinator position currently held by Mr. Rebus. In closing, I would like to thank Dr. Patricia Tillman and Ms. Jessica Cato for their leadership for the titles two, three, and four programs. The federal program's grants will appear as an action item on the next meeting's agenda. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you miss Ford? Are there any questions from board members? Mrs. Donner?
So, in understanding the transition from the Title III funds to Title IV, and Ms. Rebus, I was just trying to understand how that aligned with our budget where we added the extra person, and so if you could explain that piece.
Think point five of Mr. Rebus' position has come out of this fund, Title III and IV for several years. The position added is out of operating funds and has been added to the operating budget.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a quick question. So for Title III, um, that's just the, the amount that we, we are given is about 76, you know, 100-ish. That's formulaic, that, how, how do they factor that?
The state determines that allocation and they inform each division of the amount of funds they will be receiving based on student population of multilingual learners.
So, okay, and, and that formula, is that the same across the state? I feel like we have quite a number of multilingual learners and $76,000 doesn't seem like it would cover much.
It's, it's a state-designed formula. I'm not familiar with the formula itself, but I know along with titles I, II, and IV, it's, the state tells us based on enrollment data and other information they receive about the division's students and their needs.
If I could add to that, Ms. Hordego, the, the federal funding in all of these areas is minimal. We, we get very little federal funding compared to other school divisions because of our LCI and the student population, and they wouldn't even begin to, uh, pay for the services that we have to have for kids to make them successful.
All right. And, and did you say that we're transferring Title IV funds into, into the Title III bucket? And we?
We started to do that a number of years ago because we realized the need for non-English-speaking students to provide more support for them and to add additional money into, into Title III to do that, and that is allowable under the federal grants.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, just looking around. All right, we're moving on to item six point zero three, review of the WJCC Literacy Plan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron, I am pleased to share WJCC's Division Literacy Plan with you this afternoon. By now, you are familiar with the legislation passed by Virginia's General Assembly in 2022, 2023, and 2024, known as the Virginia Literacy Act. One of the legislation's requirements is that every Virginia school division must develop a literacy plan to be approved by the local school board and submitted to the Virginia Department of Education no later than July 1st, 2024. VDOE has narrowed the focus of the initial Division Literacy Plan to grades K through five for the upcoming school year. The 2025-2026 plan will address literacy instruction in grades K through eight and transition to be a biennial plan. The development of the Division Literacy Plan has been guided by the VDOE's four-part Virginia Literacy Act Implementation Workshop, which was attended by our division's literacy team. Division and school-level representation on that team included Dr. Heron, myself, Dr. Robin Moore, Coordinator of Elementary Literacy, Ms. Sarah Brant, Coordinator of Secondary English, Ms. Grace Rivera, K-12, literacy coach, Dr. Jessica Ellison, Principal of Hornsby Middle School, and Dr. Karen Swan, Laurel Lane Elementary Principal. Over the course of four months, the team engaged with literacy leaders from every school division in Region Two in professional learning and collaboration to identify and refine the high-quality instructional material, or HQIM, literacy strategies outlined in the WJCC Literacy Plan. The plan I will present to you this afternoon was drafted by the Division Literacy Team and represents input gathered from staff, parents, guardians, and community members from January through May, including meetings with literacy specialists at each of the three levels, elementary, middle, and high, meetings with the principals at every level, a meeting with the teacher forum, the committee comprised of the Teachers of the Year for the past two years, three virtual town hall listening sessions, an opportunity for public review and feedback open to the entire WJCC community, April 11th through May 8th, and a literacy plan committee work session held on May 1st to review feedback and revise the draft literacy plan. Committee membership was formed through principal recommendation and the Engage With Us platform. In total, 23 parents, staff, and community members, including representatives from higher education, collaborated on the plan revision. The Virginia Department of Education provided school divisions with a template to guide the development of their plans. Aligned to the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act, school divisions must address communication, instructional materials, training and professional learning, student assessment, division progress, and partnerships with parents and the community. I will provide an overview of the key content of the WJCC Literacy Plan. In the first section, planning for comprehensive communication, our vision, mission, goals, and the plan for communicating those ideas with all stakeholders are identified. The foundation of the WJCC Literacy Plan is our vision that every student in our school division is continuously growing as an engaged learner who reads, writes, and communicates across multiple disciplines to build knowledge, pursue curiosity, and set themselves on a path of lifelong learning. At every level, the key measure of our success will be student achievement, measured annually by Virginia's literacy assessments, as identified in the strategic plan's literacy goal. The plan includes supporting goals for the 2024-25 school year to address completion of training and professional learning by administrators, specialists, and teachers, increase teacher knowledge and confidence to provide evidence-based literacy instruction, and implementation of high-quality instructional materials with fidelity. Although the strategic plan literacy goal will not change in the interim, we will review and revise the supporting goals on a biennial basis in response to student and staff needs, beginning with the 25-26 Literacy Plan. The second section of the plan requires the school division to identify the high-quality instructional materials that have been selected. We are very excited to announce that the first shipment of our core literacy curriculum materials should be arriving in our elementary schools any day now, and our teachers will begin using their Benchmark Advanced Resources this month during our summer professional learning series, Camp GPS. School divisions are required to select approved K-5 supplemental and intervention materials and identify those materials to the state by December 6th, 2024. VDO, VDOE has requested in the interim that school divisions indicate that these decisions are pending by including TBD in the literacy plan for those decisions. The Virginia Literacy Act will require an unprecedented amount of training and professional learning for teachers, reading specialists, and administrators in the upcoming school year. Professional development will focus on ensuring instruction, assessment, and instructional leadership are aligned to science-based reading research. Our comprehensive professional learning and training plan, beginning with training that started immediately after your approval of the benchmark curriculum in March, is outlined in Section 3 of the Literacy Plan template. In addition to the VLA training, our teachers will engage in the first of a two-year job-embedded training experience to understand benchmark curriculum and implement it effectively in their classrooms.
Ms. Ford, are, is it okay to ask, have someone ask a question now, or would you rather wait? Riffel?
In the last slide, you talked about supplemental materials. Um, you said the date is December 4th is when those would be selected.
December 6th, 2024.
Okay. But we're going to be enacting the literacy plan in the next fall without supplemental materials?
Yes, we, as the state just went through the review and approval process for those materials and released the list of approved supplementary and intervention materials in late April. School divisions need time to consider what they may already have that is on that list and how that aligns with the core curriculum that they have adopted, and then to make decisions about additional materials that will support students.
I just, do we have a plan, I guess, for those supplemental materials to be using? I mean, they've offered supplemental materials. Are we going to be somewhat using those supplemental materials? Or are we going to have, because we're not officially using them yet, but?
It provided the list, and so it won't, we won't conduct a textbook adoption selection process, but it will be similar in that we will create committees of professionals who would be using these materials in our elementary schools to help us look through them and go through a review process to make sure that we are selecting the best materials from those approved lists that we will then purchase and use.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, this is an SBQ question that we received, and I think it's important for the public to see, like, we are having a process for this, and so thank you.
Yes, so we, we don't, now is, now is not the time to form a committee and ask, ask people to help us with that selection.
Mrs. Donner has?
Just for the viewing public, could you just explain what's a supplemental material versus what's a core curriculum material?
So, a supplemental material might be, if you review the list of approved core curricular materials that the VDOE provided earlier this year, in some instances, they noted certain weaknesses in facets of instruction. For instance, a program may have been approved as a core program, but the review committee that went through the process may have noted that the phonemic awareness instruction provided in that core program may not have been as strong overall as the committee may have wanted it to be. So, you can now turn to that list of supplementary materials, and they are identified by facet of literacy instruction, phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, vocabulary, or comprehension, which they best support. So if you adopted a core curriculum, or you know that you have additional need for your students that can be filled by having a secondary material on hand, then that's what a supplemental material is. You use it in addition to your core curriculum to fulfill that potential need.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Kavazas?
Yes, one last question. I was reading this goal, by June 2028, they're going to have 85% of our K-12 students will meet proficiency.
Dr. Kavazas, can we just let her get through the?
Oh, I thought you said, oh, okay.
I think there was a very specific question to a certain slide, but we're not quite through, and I'll come right back to you after she's finished. Okay, great, thank you.
In the fourth section of the literacy plan, school divisions must list the local and state assessments teachers and specialists will administer to measure student achievement, determine if students may benefit from intervention, and monitor students' response to instruction. WJCC students will be required to complete the state assessments for their grade levels, either the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener, formerly known as PALS, or the Standards of Learning Assessment. Locally, we will use assessment tools that are aligned to instruction in the benchmark curriculum. We will also use, as deemed necessary to support instruction and monitor progress, assessments that may be embedded in the supplementary and intervention programs that WJCC will select later this year. WJCC will use a variety of instructional and leadership measures to assess division-level progress. We will continue to leverage our teacher strengths to apply the data-based decision-making process known as the collaborative teacher teams to plan and assess the impact of evidence-based instruction. Collaborative planning will be a consistent opportunity for job-embedded support for teachers to analyze student performance and plan instruction using high-quality instructional materials side by side with the reading specialists and coaches. Division and building leaders will use classroom walkthroughs to collect evidence of the implementation of the benchmark curriculum with fidelity. And elementary teachers will self-report their knowledge and confidence with literacy instruction as a result of next year's professional learning in the Teacher Efficacy Survey that will be administered at the end of next school year. In the final section of the literacy plan, school divisions identify how they In the final section of the literacy plan, school divisions identify how they will partner with parents, caregivers, and the community to support literacy achievement for all students. In the first year of the plan, WJCC will focus on four key opportunities. First, all families will receive information about their children's achievement and progress using the assessment and communication tools aligned to vowels and the SOLs. Secondly, all families will be regularly informed of their children's literacy instruction and receive resources and strategies to support their children's literacy education at home, using the wealth of resources embedded in the Benchmark Advanced curriculum. For example, many elementary teachers provide weekly newsletters that spotlight what is being taught in the classroom. Parents may access their children's grades through ParentView, and there will be links on the WJCC website to the numerous parent resources developed by the Virginia Literacy Partnership Center at the University of Virginia. School staff will collaborate with parents of students who are identified as being at high risk to not demonstrate grade level skills to develop and monitor individual reading plans for their children. And finally, our schools will partner with the members of our community to provide our students with additional support and mentoring to enhance their daily school experiences. For example, we have a longstanding relationship with the College of Women Mary's School of Education, whose students work in our schools as tutors, mentors, and educator pre-service learning experiences. In closing, I would like to thank every WJCC community member who supported the development of the literacy plan. We look forward to revising the plan next spring to represent literacy instruction for our middle and, our elementary and middle schools for the 25-26 school year. The Division Literacy Plan will appear as an action item on the next meeting's agenda. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions you may have for the WJCC K-5 literacy plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford. Dr. Kavazos, I'll start with you.
I was just looking at this goal, by 2028, you were going to have eighty-five percent of K-12 students meet proficiency. Where are we now? How did you derive eighty-five percent, and what is the specific metric you're going to use to determine state literacy assessment?
The metric that we will use will be, for our K-2 students, it will continue to be the vowels assessment, which is our primary grade level reading assessment, and then we'll continue to measure student achievement overall using the reading SOL test. And our students in grades K through 8 take that annually, and then our students in high school take it as an end-of-course test.
And you will have, Dr. Kavazos, some information on the PALS assessment, which has just been taken. We'll be giving you some information on the instructional goal this evening to talk about our current status in that assessment, and then we will have outcomes on SOLs probably September, October.
Okay, so, I'm just curious, so, why eighty-five percent? Why not ninety or ninety-five?
I think we're going to start at eighty-five and move up over four years.
That's encouraging, okay. Where are we now?
You're going to hear that in the next presentation for the vowels assessment, so stay tuned, everyone. And then also the SOLs, we're going to bring an update once we have official data in August, September.
Thank you for that cliffhanger. Absolutely. Okay, are there any other questions for Ms. Ford? Oh, sorry.
This may come in the next presentation, but as far as assessments, are we going to be going up in number? Is it still going to be, like, quarterly? Or does this literacy program have a lot more times where we have to be assessing the students?
I think the benefit to the benchmark curriculum that we have adopted is that it has a number of tools that teachers will be able to use in a very specific manner to each student's needs. So, we don't anticipate increasing the number of screening tools that we use. We'll continue to screen our students with vowels three times a year, as has been the practice. And then, for the, this year, we've assessed our students with regard to reading with the Virginia Growth Assessment in September and January, and then we are wrapping up the SOL testing. So, we don't anticipate that will change. The other assessments typically are much shorter in duration, a minute to two minutes. It's a quick skill check that a teacher can use as part of their instruction to gather that ongoing progress monitoring.
Do you also have a question? No. Okay, anybody else? All right. Thank you. We will now move on to Item 6.04, Review Invitation for Bid for the Cafeteria Expansion at Jamestown High School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've got five operations items getting ready for summer work, and also a contract for next year's transportation, and Mr. Snipes is going to walk us through each of these in turn.
Yes, I will. I'm sorry to disappoint you, I won't be doing the vowels presentation tonight. But, a break before you get to that. Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item being brought for your consideration is the review of RFP Number 20240714, which is the cafeteria expansion at Jamestown High School. In June of 2022, the board awarded the design of the cafeteria expansion to Hudson and Associates, and in July of 2023, we did a value engineering to discuss what we should keep and what we should plan to expand on in that design. And then in September of 2023, we provided a design update to you. And so tonight, I'm here to inform you that we are ready and have put out an invitation for bid to start the expansion of the Jamestown cafeteria. This project was proposed in FY24 Capital Improvement Plan in the amount of $2,756,000, and it consists of constructing a one-story building addition totaling about 6,500 square feet within the existing courtyard of Jamestown High School. The construction will begin no later than June 29, 2024, with final completion of July, by July 11, 2025, of the base bid. The scope of work, like I said, includes clearing and demolition of the existing courtyard, preparation of the building pad, drainage, limited exterior and interior alterations of the existing building, and a new construction of a steel-framed brick-eaf-clad structure. The project also includes two add alternatives, which are new bathrooms and an add alternative for an operable partition to separate the new cafeteria expansion. An invitation for bid was issued on May 9, and it will be due back, was due back on June 6. And again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and at the time the item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been completed. The superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to award the construction of the Jamestown Cafeteria at your June 18, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions, Mr. Riffle?
This is happening, I guess, in the summer, and then it's going to be done.
Yes, we start, we start no later than June 29, 2024. Base bid, which includes the steel-framed construction, should be done by July 11. However, if we receive the award and the bid alternates are good for us, we will probably finish somewhere, I think it says somewhere around August 12, 2020.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, Mr. Riffle, yes, the work will go on during the school year, so it's a pretty major project.
I was just trying to tell the public now, it's not going to affect, you know, fall classes, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Move on to the next one, Review Purchase Requests for the Parking Lot Improvements.
Yes, this is an annual request from the Operations Department, where we go out for parking lot improvements throughout our school division, and it's done under Annual Contract Number 20230155B. Work will begin at Berkeley Middle School, Clarenburg Baker, James Blair, Jamestown High School, Laurel Lane, Norge Elementary School, here at the School Board Central Office, Stonehouse Elementary School, War Hill High School, and Lafayette High School. Now, we will be patching and repaving some areas and striping. Some areas, such here as the School Board Central Office, will get entirely new asphalt here at this building, plus striping. This project was approved in the FY24 Capital Improvement Plan for $300,000, and the superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the June 18, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions on parking lots? All right, move on to the next one, the Request for Everdriven Technologies.
Yes, this is a review for your purchase, for purchase request for everdriven technologies under Cooperative Contract Number R190401. This is a request to contract those transportation services to select students within the division during the 2024-2025 school year. WJCC currently has about twenty driver vacancies, and without contract support, the division would be able to support efficiently, efficient and timely transportation for all WJCC schools. The estimated cost for the school year 24-25 is $1.2 million, and the superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the June 18, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions on this one?
This is just to kind of fill in the gap.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so, thank you.
Okay. Doesn't look like there are any more, so we'll go on to the proposal for Matthew Whaley HVAC.
Yes, this is a review for the RFP Number 20241209. This is for design services for the Matthew Whaley Elementary School HVAC. Well, the current HVAC system at Matthew Whaley was installed in 1998 and is recent end of its useful life. One additional air-cooled chiller and pumps were replaced in 2019 and will be included in the scope add alternates. The hot water boilers were replaced in 2022 and will be excluded from this scope in this project. The project includes replacement of fan core units, makeup air units, air handling units, and split systems. We will reuse the existing ductwork and piping to the greatest extent possible, and we will clean, and then the vendor will design it to be cleaned and sealed the ductwork and adding more insulation valves. Then RFP was issued on May 4, 2024, with the due date of June 17, 2024. And at the time this item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been completed. The superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to vote for the Matthew Whaley HVAC replacement design project to the lowest and most responsive bidder at your July 9, 2024 meeting, because these results won't be back until June 17, which will not give the time, the committee time enough to review it before your next meeting on June 18.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions on this one?
And this is the last proposed agenda item from Operations tonight. This is a review for the purchase request of playground upgrades under PCA Contract Number OD31520 at Clarenburg Baker, DJ Montague, and James River Elementary School. The project includes funding that's approved in the Capital Improvement Plan of $300,000. The school playground projects are ranked yearly according to priority and condition, and we rank them according to what is needed for our SPED program. We will be replacing aging and rusting climbing equipment at DJ Montague and James River. We will be adding adaptive swings at DJ Montague and James River, installing a rubberized soft-surface play area at Clarenburg Baker for universal access, and adding ADA-inclusive play features at Clarenburg Baker. The superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the June 18, 2024 meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Mr. Riffle?
I'd say that Bright Beginnings isn't on this list, but I've visited Bright Beginnings and saw that there was a part of, section of their playground that's, like, completely flooded. Is that, like, is there timeline for other?
Where were you locating, when you said at Bright Beginnings? Which school, sir?
There's, the ones that directly outside the kindergarten classrooms, there's one that's being used by the self-contained classes, and there's one additional that they basically stop students from going into because it's full.
Are you discussing at Clarenburg Baker?
No, Bright Beginnings. I'm sorry, I'm talking about the one, this school by Hornsby Middle.
Yeah, BB. Okay, blatant. I don't have any information about that, and I will have to look into my work order for that.
I just think, I would like to know if there's other timelines for other schools, yeah, because this is the first I'm hearing of timelines at all for playgrounds.
Is there a timeline for playground upgrades?
For other ones, yes, yeah.
Yes, sir, we do have that in our, in our facility condition assessments where we replace the playgrounds, and I can provide that to you in the next SPQ.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Snipes on any of these? All right, thank you so much. And now we will review authorization for VHSL memberships for the 2024-25 school year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual activity as well, and Mr. Odstott is presenting it this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. This evening, I am presenting information on our annual membership application fee that allows WJCC student athletes to participate in high school varsity athletics and activities through the Virginia High School League. The VHSL requires the annual membership fee plus an additional fee to obtain catastrophic insurance for athletes through the league. There are a couple of points to bring to your attention this evening about our three high school applications. There are several components to the annual fee. First, each school pays a membership fee of $800 plus $35 for each varsity activity participated in the previous school year. This means we pay $35 for each sport or activity that we participated in in school year 23-24. Additionally, an insurance formula is used to calculate the fee per school. The league directs us to use the previous year's roster to provide an estimated number of athletes by sport, and the fee is $5.50 per student. The league directed schools to use the most recent rosters to project our participation numbers for insurance purposes, and our current application uses rosters from the 23-24 school year to estimate the insurance needs for the upcoming school year. The individual applications for each school are attached to the agenda item, and this year, the total cost for the VHSL membership fee in WJCC is $13,118. Thank you for reviewing the three applications for the 24-25 school year. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Odstott. Mr. Riffle?
This has not been a formal request to the board, but somebody I've spoken to after a meeting, someone was asking about lacrosse being added to the VHL. I'm sure it's been asked multiple times, other divisions, this is a thing that happens, like, in Chesapeake, where I was from, it's at Hickory High School, but not anywhere else. What is our process for adding new sports eventually?
There is a process that would go through the school board to add a new sport to our catalog, and we're happy to explore options of adding lacrosse and provide you with all the information necessary to make that decision. I can provide that to you in short order.
Sure.
Mrs. Henley?
Definitely. I get emails all the time about this, and I just got one, and I keep referring them because I didn't think that was in my lane, but now that it is, there is someone that wants movement on lacrosse, so...
If I could just add to that, there's a process for getting to add a sport, there's always a pretty significant budgetary impact, and that's the part that the board would actually be approving as part of next year's budget. So, no new thing comes without a significant amount of dollars attached to it. And so, as we explored the price, we could bring information, as we begin to look at our budget for next year, then the board would consider that, and whether they want to move forward with lacrosse rather than something else. It'll compete with other things in the budget.
This has been tried before, correct?
We have talked about it before, absolutely.
So, did it get off the ground, or did it?
Did not get funded on the last occasion. Dr. Whaley, you may have some info, not get funded on the last occasion. Dr. Whaley, you may have some information, I see here.
Well, there are several things to consider along with the budget. Number one, I know there's some conversation that Adam and I have had with other people in the Bay Rivers, because we need to have teams to play against. It's another significant budget implication if we are having to travel to Chesapeake and Richmond versus having other teams in the Bay Rivers come on board, so those are conversations that we're having. Our students are playing, they're playing club sports. We realize it's a need, so we actually have been researching this, but as Dr. Heron says, it's a significant budget consideration, and then making sure we have teams to play.
Any idea, when you say significant?
One second, Dr. Kavazos, we have a...
Format.
Yeah. Thanks. Mrs. Donner.
Just for, so to understand from, if you were to add, let's say, a lacrosse or a sport, what do you have to consider in terms of the balance of, I guess, Title IX in girls' and boys' sports?
That would be definitely a consideration in terms of our participation numbers division-wide, and how that looks in terms of male versus female participation. Facilities is also a big consideration in terms of adding additional sports, especially sports. Lacrosse would be certainly a sport that would impact our gate revenue for our athletic programs, and so the ability to provide competition spaces, that would enable us to collect gate fees, would be very important and a big consideration for the sustainability of those two sports at our schools.
Thank you. Dr. Kavazos?
I'm sorry, I just, does anybody have any idea, when they say significant budget constraints, what significant means?
We can certainly explore it, because I think it will have changed from, from a few years ago when we looked at this, so I don't want to throw out a number, I'd like to be able to bring you some definitive number after we explore. So I don't want to throw out a number. I'd like to be able to bring you some definitive uh number after we explore the the actual cost, but we could certainly get that for you.
So then there's uh since there's so much discussion, does this mean that uh there's been some sort of unofficial move to try and add lacrosse to the sports program?
There's no official or unofficial move right now. I think we always consider possibilities for adding, for example, diving was was added just last year. Uh, so we're always looking at opportunities for students, and then we look at the viability of that within our school division. So we can certainly um get some information on cost first of all, uh and then uh maybe consider where we want to take it from there if the board wants to pursue it.
It just seems to me it's another way for um students to get scholarships to different colleges, particularly for females. So I think that would be a very good reason to to move forward with lacrosse.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Miss, they're hosting, Mrs. Henley, Mr. Riffle?
What was the issue or reason why it wasn't approved years ago? Was it cost? Was it a lack of participation? Is there a reason why where the board didn't approve it, or would, I mean, what was the reason it was not, it's not a sport now?
I'm not sure we even voted on it. Uh, Dr. Worley, can you remember? It was a few years ago.
I I remember being discussed when I was a principal, and it's come up in conversation, so we started collecting budgetary information, but it was never an official. Let's, let's, you know, implement lacrosse at this point.
Uh, I believe it was discussed in a budget workshop, work session, and because of the cost involved at the time, it didn't move forward to be voted on as part of the budget process. Um, so I think, you know, I think we need to probably ascertain if if the whole board wants us to look at this. Um, or is it just one member of the board or two members of the board before we put significant time and effort into the exploration of it as a, as a sport?
Okay, I can, I can figure that out after the meeting. Mrs. Henley?
That would be great because I know I've addressed the person four times, and so it would be nice if we could get an answer as to who's supposed to bring this forward.
Okay. Was there only, Mr. Riffle?
Um, I see that golf is not a boys' and girl's sport. Is there a girls' and guys' component to the ball?
Girls are allowed to play golf, yes.
This is not denoted in any of the applications, but I know there are.
We, we don't have separate girls' golf teams. That it's a coed golf program.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else from Mr. Odstott? All right, it looks like that was it. Thank you. All right, and now on to item six point ten, uh, review appointment of V S B A voting delegate and alternate delegate. I think this is mine. Um, it is customary, this is, this is to appoint delegates who would vote for V S B A leadership at V S B A conferences. It is typically the chair and vice chair, although it doesn't have to be if anyone would like to nominate or self-nominate someone else. Um, other, otherwise it would by default be um me and Mrs. Donner. Does that sit well with the board? I mean, I guess we'll vote, we'll vote next time, but that is, that is what this item is about, so. Okay, if anyone wants to nominate in the next two weeks, you can. Happy to entertain that.
I support Mike.
All right, we'll move on to um section seven, uh, and we will hear item seven point zero one, discussion of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four year-end projection.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewing is going to give us some very preliminary information on year-end projection of remaining funds. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I will be providing an update regarding our projected revenue and expenditures for this fiscal year. This information is projected, preliminary, and unaudited, and will change as we close out the fiscal year. This slide shows a breakdown of our projected revenue as compared to our revised budget. We do not yet have our final allocation from the state. The information has been projected based on the most recent cap tool that was provided in March. The federal and other local funds are based on revenue received to date. Our total projected revenue is currently estimated to be one hundred seventy-one point two million, which is approximately four hundred thousand below our fiscal year twenty-four budget of one hundred seventy-one point six million. Again, this is, this information is estimated and may change. Here you will see our projected expenditure status as of the end of May. Our year-to-date expand expenditures amount to approximately one hundred forty-two point six million, and we currently have outstanding encumbrances of four point three million. Our projected payroll expenditures for the remainder of the year are estimated to be sixteen point seven million, and projected non-payroll expenditures for June are estimated to be seven hundred fifty thousand for a total projected expenditure amount of one hundred sixty-four point three million. When you compare our projected revenue to our projected expenditures, the preliminary estimate of funds remaining at June thirtieth totals approximately six point nine million. Based on the contract for the joint operations of the school division, ninety percent of this amount, or six point two million, would be maintained by the localities in a future school use account, and ten percent, or approximately seven hundred thousand, would be retained by the localities. The surplus is made up of savings on the expenditure side in the amount of six point nine million. The majority of the savings, five point nine million, is from salary and benefit savings from open positions. Our staffing has continued to fluctuate month to month throughout the entire school year across all areas of the organization. As an example, on the vacancy listing for the week of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, we had a total of forty-eight open positions, which included positions across the division from instructional to operational. With positions being vacant for longer periods of time, the amount of savings ended up being higher than our normal annual attrition savings. In addition, with Esser grant funds expiring in September, we have shifted expenditures from the operating fund to Esser grants to ensure all grant monies are spent. In closing, I just want to remind everyone again that the information is projected as well as preliminary. It will be fine-tuned as we close out the year over the next few months, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Any questions from the board? Mr. Riffle?
Um, I saw the future use account. How is that? Um, when we talk about, like, you know, our previous discussions with the budget, making in this past cycle, um, how do we use that money as like a, like a start for our, our discussions? Because it seems like maybe our partners forget that we give the money back to them, and it's like we ask for, I think, what, ten million dollars this past year additional? And you gave them ten million dollars back last year. We're giving them six point, six million dollars back this year. So it's like, where's that in discussions when we have a conversation of like, the state's giving us this. We have this, gave, we gave this back to you in good faith, right, and how are we? So it's, it's just like my loss of like, how is such a, like a hard back and forth, and it's like, we're being a pretty good partner in all this. And like, the section defines us to do this, but we don't get the, you know, the applause for doing it. And then, you know, we're, we're gonna have a tough battle. It's like, it's just kind of a weird thing. As I, could you, Ms. Ewing, I know the long question. How does that kind of play into into like our discussions moving forward?
So this is the second year under this agreement. So last year is the first year where that was the agreement, and we requested specifically the funds to be utilized for the pre-K construction. Um, if you'll recall, last month, when the board adopted the C I P, there's still a shortfall for the pre-K funding. So ideally, these funds that we return would be used for more one-time costs because supporting an ongoing operational budget is not um sustainable. So I believe once we finalize the year and I bring back the information in September, then a discussion could be had about requesting these funds again, possibly to go towards pre-K or possibly, if you recall, some of our projects were removed from next year's budget, C I P budget.
Exactly. That's kind of what I'm pointing out too, but it's like, we have things that are unfunded in our budget, and we're giving them some money back that then we don't get to spend until next year, which kind of messes up our timelines and things, and it just doesn't. It's not a really good way of using good governance here.
Yeah, I think the ninety, ten percent is the new agreement, and at least we know that ninety percent of those funds, any leftover funds go into our capital improvement projects. That's our understanding of the agreement. And so to be in a second year or last year of Esser funds where we, we have additional dollars, and we also have a lot of uh positions that haven't been filled, at least this year, we can request it to fully fund the pre-K so we can move ahead with the construction bid in the fall. And and if there's any additional apart from that, we will, as Ms. Ewing said, we will absolutely ask to have the projects that were in our C I P put back in again that were taken out just recently.
Thank, thank you for playing into my, my, we should be working, we're working as a team, and I'm just like, I'm always a little bit disappointed when it's kind of gets beyond the room here, so, thank you.
Any other questions? So just for clarification, moving forward, we would, because we are now, we've um, we're done with Esser funds. So moving forward, we probably will not see numbers quite like this that we're giving back. Is that the idea?
I think one thing that will impact it will be our ability to fill every single budgeted position, which will remain a challenge. Uh, so there will potentially still be monies left over. If we end up filling every position and having them filled hundred percent all year, then I would see us giving a lot less back, and our goal is to get within two percent of the budget. Uh, you don't want to get so close because you don't want to wear orange, however, uh, you really, you really, if you're managing it well in a budget of our size, if you get within two percent, you've really done very well. And so two, two and a half percent is what we would want to have left. Um, there is a, an understanding, I don't think it was ever fully discussed with us, that we will have two million remaining that will be go towards our, our C I P projects every year at the end of the year. So that would be very much in line with that. Ms. Ewing, anything else to add?
I think you've covered it.
I have my backup. No, in fact, she's my back. I have her backup.
Uh, Mr. Riffle?
I just would like to restate that most of this money is from salary, like things unfulfilled by salary. So it's like, we have, this is for personnel, and we should be able to use it in other ways to improve education, and that's kind of what the argument should be for.
Correct, and and the one thing I would add to that, just for the the benefit of the community as well, we want to fill those positions because we've a lot of employees have worked additional hours, additional time, additional effort to to actually accomplish the work of many more people that that should have, could have been here if we hadn't been able to employ them. So we've got people working very hard to to do the same job with less people.
Okay, it looks like, looks like there are no other questions or comments, so thank you, Ms. Ewing. Uh, item seven point zero two, strategic plan update for goals one, two, and five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased again this evening to bring back an update on our strategic plan goals and progress that has been made so far. Uh, this evening, we're going to talk about goals one, two, and five, the last of the goals uh to to bring to your attention. And Dr. Worley and Mr. Walker are going to lead us off tonight with the, the academic goal one first of all.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, tonight, Mr. Walker, Mrs. Walter, and I are here to bring you an update on the focus strategies this year for goals one and two of the strategic plan, including a deeper look at the incredible work of our WJCC staff. Goal one of the strategic plan focuses on academic achievement and college and career readiness with a commitment to prepare students for success in post-secondary education and careers. We will briefly recap initiatives and then highlight four other focus areas in goal one that are listed on the current slide.
Goal two of the strategic plan focuses on educational equity and fostering a learning environment that respects the diversity of students and providing targeted equitable opportunities for success. And within goal two, we'll share some of the work on strategies two point two, access to rigorous academic programming, and two point three, access to high-quality preschool education.
Tonight's presentation is intended to capture the essence of the ongoing work across the division to support our academic achievement and prepare our students for college or careers. Although we are not able to provide end-of-year data for all academic areas at this time, we will provide a glimpse of the continued work across many strategies supporting these goals. In partnership with families, all of this work starts with our extremely dedicated teachers, support staff, building leaders, and central office leaders who all work collaboratively to support the success of our students.
On this slide are some examples of the strategies that we're using to sustain the work across the division, such as the use of hands-on manipulatives, instructional labs, small group instruction, common assessments, and professional learning.
Collaborative teacher teams are one of our strategies sustaining the work. Let's take a few minutes to hear the voices of our teachers discussing the power of collaborative teacher teams and the positive impact on teaching and learning.
The C T T process has positively affected our students by allowing us to really hone in on the skills and strands that they need the most work in, and then developing um activities and lessons that are designed to really help them progress. It's been great for our struggling learners as well as our learners who need a bit more extension. Um, we have found that the process has been very rewarding. It gives us a time and place to really sit and and focus on the kids who we know are struggling across the board in English nine, and it's been an amazing process overall.
My students are able to identify organizational patterns better. That was something that they struggled a lot with before we talked about it in C T T. Um, they're also able to use reading strategies to monitor their comprehension a lot more. Um, they struggle to really identify important details, and after working with my C T T group and figuring out strategies to work with those students, I was able to then help them reach new goals.
Working on a team is so important, and it's one of the things that I think makes a good teacher, a great teacher. It allows you to really work as a team, and schools are teams. So when we get to work as a team, it really benefits us and the kids.
We use our C T T process to help streamline our content that we teach for math. Uh, giving students a pre-test lets us see their strengths, their weaknesses. Um, and also, we give back the tests after um we've taught the content. It gives them a good sense of success. And then, once they get their final test, they can see that they've really, really grown so much.
Everything we do in our grade level is focused on a team approach, and this process has allowed us to really collaborate and look closely at the student actions in the process. Um, what we're doing in order to guide children towards meeting their goals and their learning outcomes. Um, that collaboration piece is really huge within the C T T process, and we find that it's made a difference in our actions as teachers. We have found that the C T T process has really caused us to take a deep dive into the student actions portion of the process, that we're looking for meaningful, authentic activities and authentic outcomes for our learners.
We go. Additionally, we foster continued learning, improvement, and a growth mindset. We are expanding opportunities for teachers to choose to participate in coaching cycles. Let's listen to two of our elementary teachers share their reflections about their experiences with instructional coaching this school year.
I was coached earlier this spring with Kathy Wooten, and it was really an opportunity for me to make some mid-course corrections to my instruction. And using the data from our Matthew Whaley literacy data wall, I was able to identify individual students and groups of students that could benefit from the coaching that I received. And it really helped me to understand some of the connections that the children were making between the words, their word study, and reading. It helped them feel successful. It helped me feel successful. I was able to translate that into support from the parents at home. They were able to understand better what their children were needing to do. My success is then being able to document increases in their reading scores. And um to have two of the four children identified for PAL's um support where, um, I guess they left the program. They are no longer identified. And as a grade level, um, we also saw our increase in our reading scores or spelling scores go up by to eighty-one percent, so the children were passing. And I feel like it's going to be something I will definitely carry on into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
It's been amazing, um, having Dr. Securcy come in and help me with modeling this U Fly program has been a huge impact for them and has also shown on their latest PAL scores. Before we even start teaching it, we collaborate together. She comes in, we talk about the lesson. We told the kids, you know, we're doing a co-teaching together, and they love. lesson, we told the kids, you know, we're doing a co-teaching together and they love that, that teachers are also learning as well as them.
There we go. As you may recall, back in September this school year, the All In Virginia Initiative was funded to support Virginia School Division's efforts working with students in grades three through eight in three main areas, tutoring, expectations around the Virginia Literacy Act, and chronic absenteeism. Our School Division Plan was approved by the Virginia Department of Education in late November and we began planning, learning about the new digital resources, and hiring tutors to support this new initiative to begin in the second semester. To give you the total big picture, beyond regular classroom instruction with a student's teacher, this chart on the slide reflects all intervention options for eligible elementary and middle school students. Various school-based resources and interventions were utilized to support student achievement. For example, some students used computer adaptive resources like IXL, Xern, and Lexia, and/or also receive support from school-based interventionists and/or tutors that may have been using specialized resource materials like U Fly. As an example, looking on the left side of the chart, you can see that four hundred twenty-eight elementary students in grades kindergarten through second received literacy intervention this school year and three hundred twenty-three students received math intervention.
Lexia and Xern are two digital platforms for intervention and tutoring funded through the Virginia Department of Education. We implemented these resources mid-year as soon as they became available. The first digital platform, Lexia Reading, is a technology-based literacy program designed to improve reading skills through personalized adaptive learning for students. This slide provides elementary and middle school data. There are several outcomes displayed on this, the slide, for example, in grades three through five, ninety-six thousand one hundred and eighty-seven Lexia units were completed. Of students who began working below grade level, forty percent advanced at least one grade level. The second digital platform, Xern, gives students the opportunity to practice, explore, and put mathematical concepts learned into use. Embedded scaffolding provides just-in-time support that supports, that helps students catch up and then move forward. This slide provides several data examples of Xern access. One example is in grades three through five, forty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five lessons were completed between February first and May fifteenth with an average of twenty-two lessons per student. As you can see, significant student growth occurred using these online platforms in elementary and middle school.
As you've heard in previous presentations, all Virginia School Divisions are expected to comply with the Virginia Literacy Act requirements, starting in school year twenty-four, twenty-five. A tremendous amount of work led by the Department of Curriculum and Instruction Staff is key to this work. Developing the W J C C Division Literacy Plan, as you heard earlier, the textbook adoption process for the K five elementary core curriculum, and the continued efforts providing professional learning around effective evidence-based reading instruction, which has continued throughout this school year, will continue into the summer and throughout all next year. Annually, the School Division administers the phonological awareness literacy screener, better known as PALS, being renamed to vowels for next year, to all students in grades kindergarten through second grade. This statewide literacy screener identifies students meeting the literacy proficiency benchmark each spring. The testing window actually just closed on Friday, May thirty-first, so we're able to provide these results to you. As you can see on the chart, W J C C students in grades kindergarten through second grade are making significant growth. Current results show that eighty-five percent of our students in grades K through two are meeting the spring proficiency literacy benchmark, which exceeds last year's eighty-one percent of students meeting the benchmark and it also exceeds the pre-pandemic score of eighty-two percent back in two thousand nineteen.
The heart of goal one is our focus on the delivery of engaging instruction across all content areas. First, we'll take a look at math. Our teachers seek to provide authentic learning experiences, incorporate hands-on activities, and use common assessment data to create appropriate small groups and inform instructional planning. Our initial algebra data review at the end of last school year showed an opportunity for growth because our overall pass rate dropped three percentage points. Therefore, to gauge student progress more accurately in Algebra One and to plan targeted responsive instruction for all schools prior to the S O L tests, Algebra One teachers administered a division mid-year common assessment. This assessment was given through Synergy Assessment Manager and was modeled after the end-of-course S O L test. Our content coordinator Rebecca Cothran and our math coach, Dr. Heather Holcomb, worked closely with teachers and schools to support this intervention. This assessment provided valuable data to schools and classroom teachers as they reviewed algebra skills and planned lessons and intervention to support gaps in knowledge as we prepared for the two thousand twenty-four Algebra Assessment. Preliminary data shows this focused strategy is working, however, we are currently in the midst of our S O L testing season and we look forward to our finalized data from the video later this summer. There are many strategies supporting math instruction. Here are a few examples of the work happening in our schools. The picture on the top left shows a calculus student presenting a project. The student posing as a teacher is leading a lesson on art and math. Students had to identify geometric shapes in the picture. The center picture shows a Norwich Elementary student using manipulatives to reinforce concrete conceptual math instruction. And the picture on the top right shows Lafayette students participating in whiteboard relays in geometry. Teams of three work together in the process of solving a triangle with sine and cosine ratios. The bottom right picture shows a Channel Middle student, school student using hand-to-mind math manipulatives during math instruction.
With last year's full implementation of the approved K twelve science standards of learning, schools are continuing a strategic focus on science instruction this school year. Key strategies implemented across the division include hands-on labs, direct vocabulary instruction, science-related field trips, small group instruction using nonfiction text in elementary schools, division-supported collaborative planning and data analysis from the usage of common assessments. On the slide, you can see students from James River Elementary learning about seasonal changes and James Blair Middle School students extracting DNA from strawberries. And we would like to recognize our K twelve science coordinator, Ms. Jessica Gatto, who was here earlier. She's truly been a K twelve partner with our classroom teachers across the division, school leadership, providing support for instructional planning, actually writing grant applications, analyzing student performance data, and then providing it all to the schools to save them time. With a shared vision to improve environmental education and grant funding of almost sixty thousand dollars, W J C C schools partnered with the James River Association and the National Park Service to support all thirty-nine grade four teachers and eight hundred thirty-five fourth grade students. The students received an end class lesson on watersheds, food webs, and the James River with experiences culminating in a field trip to the Captain John Smith Chesapeake National Historic Trail. During the hands-on field trip, students explored the natural world through three different outdoor learning stations, connecting the curriculum to Virginia's important natural resources right here in a local outdoor setting. Part of the grant funds were also used to support professional learning for nine of the division's fourth grade teachers to continue learning more creative ways of enhancing learning experiences in natural settings. And we are looking forward to continuing this partnership into the next school year as grant funding has already been secured to continue these experiences for students. This brief video clip shows some of our grade four Metoaca Elementary students on their field trip to the James River Lower Education Center at Jamestown. The grade four science standards of learning expect our students to investigate, build models, and understand the interrelationships between people, communities, and living ecosystems. Specifically, the students are gathering sticks from the woods to build a model of a bald eagle nest in order to fully comprehend the actual size of the nest when it's up in a tree. This hands-on opportunity helped the students to better understand the true size of the nest and additional opportunities for some math integration along the way and discussion about circumference and diameter.
Continuing our look at environmental education, I will share examples at the middle and high school levels. This slide shows Berkeley Middle School students at the Virginia Institute of Marine Science engaging in meaningful watershed experiences as a part of our partnership in the Southeastern Virginia Environmental Education Consortium. Teachers received field-based professional learning and students examined the biodiversity of the York River, collected and learned about different aquatic species, and explored oyster, explored oyster reef habitats in the field and lab setting. At Jamestown High School, Rebecca Elton's Field Biology Class explored the biodiversity of the York River at York River State Park. While canoeing, her students discussed biotic and abiotic factors and learned about the impact humans can have on the Chesapeake Bay and vice versa. Purposeful environmental science education across all levels plays a crucial role in shaping students into environmental stewards and promotes a sustainability mindset for our community. Strategy one seven focuses on relationships and student-centered environments. The facilitation of a positive culture is paramount as this impacts the school, which has a direct impact on learning. If students feel safe and welcomed and cared for, they will make connections with staff and other students, learn to set their own academic goals, and ultimately be successful in school. We could share hundreds of stories outlining the work of school teams in this area, but here are a few examples of this hard work in action. The picture on the top left shows students at D J celebrating with our district teacher of the year, Sarah Ray Petch. The picture on the bottom left shows kindness week ambassadors at Hornsby Middle School being recognized with their students at a pep rally. The top center picture shows War Hill students who were nominated by teachers with their awards for modeling perseverance, respect, integrity, determination, and/or empathy, which are pillars of the War Hill Pride Award. The bottom center picture shows War Hill students on the No Place for Hate Committee engaged in the Diversity Dialogue Day through the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities. The pictures are the right, on, on the right highlight James River Elementary School as the river community was excited to bring back the Dolphin Madness tradition this year, where the James River staff competed against W J C C firefighters in a friendly game of basketball. When students are engaged in a positive school environment, they become invested in their own learning and progress by setting goals. Research shows student goal setting and specifically students taking ownership for their own learning has a significant impact on academic growth. When students set goals, they engage in self-reporting of grades and they predict their own academic progress. This slide is a quick review of John Hattie's research and his barometer of influence connected to the impact of specific strategies on student learning. For example, a point four or higher on the barometer is in the quote-unquote zone of desired effects, meaning research-based strategies with a point four or higher effect size will have a more significant impact on the academic growth of our students. In fact, according to this research, self-reported grades has a one point four-four effect size, which could advance student achievement by three or more years during one school year. Based upon this significant impact of student goal setting and self-reporting of grades on learning, we continue this work in our School Division. Our secondary schools use goal setting through math classes and many English classes. Our elementary schools use goal setting in content areas such as math and science. Pictured here on the left, you see a D J Monahue fifth grade student reflecting on his fiction narrative writing goals. The center picture shows an elementary student tracking progress in math. The picture on the far right is an example of a reflection opportunity in English eleven used for students to write about their snapshot scores over time.
Goal two, strategy two point three of the division's strategic plan points to ensuring that all eligible students have access to high-quality preschool education and building kindergarten readiness. Our phenomenal Bright Beginnings pre-K program is led by Principal Deanna Nelson, thank you for being here tonight, her leadership team, and the amazing teachers and support staff. As a high-level summary, we have thirty-two classrooms at five elementary school sites with four hundred six students on-site, plus eighteen community-based students supported by itinerant staff for a grand total of four hundred and twenty-four students. Sixty-seven percent, or two hundred and eighty-six of those students are receiving special education services and we've exceeded one hundred percent capacity of the three hundred and ninety-five available seats for the Bright Beginnings program. A high-quality program is multifaceted, but it really starts with the people, having a student-centered focus supported by quality teaching and a partnership with students' families. We have thirty-five licensed teachers serving our preschool students and seventy-five percent of those teachers are duly endorsed teachers in both general education and special education. Our Bright Beginnings program uses a state-approved, developmentally-appropriate, comprehensive curriculum called Streamin Three, and it's differentiated for the various student-age classrooms. An additional high-quality component is the observation feedback group for the Bright Beginnings classroom teachers. Aligned to state expectations, all Bright Beginnings teachers have received two class observations for a grand total of sixty-two total throughout this year. The class observation instrument is focused on quality teaching practices, student engagement, and outcomes aligned to the state's early learning and development standards. You'll be pleased to know that all of our thirty-two pre-K classrooms are scoring beyond the state benchmark expectation. Last, but certainly not the least, is our partnership with families. The Bright Beginning staff has held one thousand eight hundred ninety-two family engagement opportunities, prioritizing face-to-face in-person meetings at school, through home visits, meetings at the local library, and some even on Zoom to accommodate parents' work schedules. We have one hundred eighty-one rising kindergarten students exiting the Bright Beginnings pre-K program who have made tremendous growth and are kindergarten-ready. This chart shows the percentages of four-year-old students who met kindergarten readiness benchmarks by the end of the school year on the Teaching Strategies Gold pre-K assessment. The T S G assessment is a widely-used assessment tool to holistically assess a student's development across several domains. The gray bars are the fall percentages of students meeting expectations for literacy, numeracy, and social-emotional skills. The light orange bars show the end-of-year percentages of students meeting those expectations. So let's look on the right side of the chart, you can see that in the fall of this school year, thirty-five percent of four-year-olds were meeting the expected literacy benchmarks. That's increased dramatically to seventy-eight percent of those four-year-old students meeting the end-of-year literacy benchmark. The student growth in numeracy increased forty-one percentage points from fall to end of year and the social-emotional skills rose from twenty-nine percent to seventy-two percent of the four-year-old students meeting the benchmark. This tremendous student growth shows that the investment in early childhood education is making a difference for our students being kindergarten-ready. Kudos to the amazing W J C C staff serving these pre-K students in the Bright Beginnings programs at five of our elementary school sites. Goal two, strategy two point two focuses on equitable access for underrepresented student populations to rigorous academic courses and programming. This slide is a high-level overview of the gifted identification process. It begins with universal screening of multiple school-wide data points to identify needs for differentiation in the classrooms, second-grade ability testing, the student referral process that happens annually by internal and/or external stakeholders, gifted testing, the eligibility determination process, and ultimately parent notification in the spring. Now that we've seen the high-level gifted identification process, here is the W J C C gifted identification data by enrollment over the last three years. There are some fluctuation of identification numbers year over year, but overall, numbers of students from underrepresented populations are starting to rebound for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. For example, we see increases in the number percentage of identified gifted Hispanic students and an increase in the two or more student reporting group. The Gifted Education and Talent Development Department remain focused on decreasing disproportionality and increase. and increasing the rigor of Tier 1 instruction to improve student outcomes for all students.
Finally, I will, sorry, I think we went too far. There we go, sorry. Finally, I will bring information supporting our work in Strategy 4 of Goal 1, where our focus is to expand opportunities for students to participate in authentic workplace experiences. It is important to understand how we define an authentic workplace experience or a high-quality work-based experience. The Virginia Department of Education identifies 12 different high-quality work-based learning experiences, which are listed on the screen and outlined in the video handout provided to you tonight. These experiences are built and based on instructional preparation from courses students have taken and students' career and future interests. They take place in partnership with local businesses or organizations and enable students to apply that classroom instruction in a real-world work environment. The experiences listed in green on the slide above are work-based learning experiences that students are currently participating in this school year in WJCC. When looking at our current experiences, it is helpful to look at both the variation in type of experience available and the number of students participating in these experiences. The chart on the current slide compares this data over three years. This allows us to see the growth in both the type of experience and the number of students participating. The numbers reflected here are only representative of programs within our three high schools and does not include experiences our students are participating in at New Horizons. Here, you are able to see that when looking at categories of high-quality work-based learning experiences for students, in the 21-22 school year, WJCC students were participating in four out of the 12 experiences, while this year, we have students participating in seven out of the 12 experiences through cooperative education, clinical experiences, externships, internships, school-based enterprises, supervised agricultural experience, the immersion, and service learning. Our student participation numbers have grown from 57 in the 2020-21 school year to 287 in this school year. The next three slides share examples of high-quality work-based learning experiences currently taking place in WJCC schools and the number of students participating in that specific experience. For example, we currently have 19 students participating in clinical experience within a healthcare setting and 27 students participating in a cooperative education experience. Additionally, we have seven students participating in an externship by working in an elementary classroom as an extension of their teacher's for tomorrow coursework, one student participating in an internship at central office, and 21 students participating in a supervised agricultural experience. One example of this is a vet science student working at the Heritage Humane Society. We currently have 12 students participating in a school-based enterprise, which our most common example is the Bayport Credit Union branches within our high schools, and finally, we have 200 students participating in service learning. Within this type of experience, students are researching a community need, develop a plan to address that need, and then implement the plan developed. We have multiple examples of this happening around the Division 2, of which I will highlight in the next slide. Service learning is more than community service and enables students to learn and apply academic, social, and personal skills to improve the community, continue individual growth, and develop an understanding of service to the community to last throughout their lives. This slide shares two examples of service learning that took place this year at War Hill High School in Ms. Thalmadge's Engineering classes. The students in the Principles of Engineering class worked with Amy's Nails, a local nail salon. The students met with the team at Amy's Nails and partnered in creating nail powder trays. The students designed these nail trays and then built them using 3D printers in their labs. Here you see the owners of Amy's Nails at their salon with some of the nail powder trays that were created by our students. On the right side, you will see room number signs that were designed and built by students in Ms. Thalmadge's Introduction to Engineering class. In partnership with building staff, students identified a need to create new door number signs. The signs with white numbers also include Braille numbers, allowing students to learn this skill and understanding the need to create inclusive structures within our buildings. Both were valuable experiences for our students and met the needs of the school and a community In alignment with these increased offerings, this year, we were excited to introduce a new online platform where students and their families can review work-based learning opportunities available. Within the College and Career Readiness website, on the WJCC main page, you will find the link to work-based learning opportunities seen here on the slide. Within this platform, students can search by type of experience, career cluster, or scroll through all of the openings to see what may be of interest to them. Students can then apply directly through this page, and then they will be connected with the employer for next steps to determine approval for the experience. We encourage students to check the site often as it is updated as we identify new experiences available for students. The College and Career Readiness team has been creating opportunities across the Division to help students learn more about various careers and start to build skills for the future. The next few slides highlight different events. This year, WJCC continued our annual Manufacturing and Trades Day, highlighting career opportunities in both manufacturing and the trades industries for students. For this year's experience, we partnered with the Virginia Peninsula Community College to explore the trades portion of the day, and students participated in a tour and hands-on experiences within the new VPCC Toennow Trade Center. Included in the experience at the Trade Center was a panel of local employers in the trades who shared more about what they do each day and their personal experiences in the industry. This year, we were able to provide this experience to 139 students across all three high schools. This year, our Health Careers Day, in partnership with Centerra Regional Hospital, provided an opportunity to take 56 students to Centerra where they experienced demonstrations in six different departments at the hospital, including imaging, emergency department, the cardiac cath lab, operating room, the laboratory, and inpatient post-acute rehabilitation. After demonstration, students were able to hear from a panel of hospital staff, including nursing, physicians, physical therapists, pharmacists, integrated care, and respiratory therapists. When the panel discussion completed, students were able to have small group discussions with these professionals and spend time asking any questions they may have about their career and their journey to where they are now. We hosted our Second Annual Career Connections Fair in March for 10th through 12th grade students and families. With the slogan of "Get Connected, Get Experienced, Get Employed," we were able to partner with 50 different businesses and organizations who were offering either a work-based learning experience, full-time career opportunities, or a combination of these for students. It is estimated that approximately 150 WJCC students and community members attended and learned more at this event. WJCC began offering annual mock interviews for high school students through our Economics and Personal Finance classes during the 21-22 school year. Over the past three years, we have continued to grow this opportunity, not just through the numbers, but also through the components of the experience. As a lead-up to the day of mock interviews, EPF teachers provide instruction on resume writing, interview skills, and this year, we added the experience of all students completing a sample job application to the lessons. The unit is culminated with a mock interview event, where this year, we had 126 community volunteers spend their time interviewing 684 high school students. This experience has shown to be very beneficial for WJCC and the community overall. Last school year, WJCC launched its first-ever senior hiring event. Through this opportunity, local employers signed up to interview students onsite and make job offers for student candidates when there was a good fit. This opportunity allows students who are still working out their next steps to graduate with a job ready to go and begin their next chapter employed in a career that offers growth. Examples of employers that have partnered with this opportunity are Newport New Shipbuilding and Bayport Credit Union. Moving forward, we plan to continue growing student experience opportunities and to increase our community partnerships and access.
Additionally, we will prioritize high-quality first-time instruction in our efforts to close achievement gaps. Our professional learning efforts will strategically support instruction across the Division. And as you can see, our amazing teachers, leaders, and staff are committed to providing the best learning opportunities for our students. We will continue to make a difference for every child. Once again, we look forward to seeing the results of this work as the video finalizes scores over the next few months. This concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer questions for you at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Worley, Mr. Walker, and Ms. Walters. Board members, Mr. Riffle, go ahead.
Thank you all for that presentation. This is a great goal. I think the community should really look into this episode of School Board if it could. This really answers a lot of questions for what's going on. But my question actually is of the VPCC partnership. I've heard that there are ways to expand our usage of the Toennow school, like making a senior block schedule. I know from my experience in my data, there's not a great dual enrollment type of experience, like where students can get credit for doing vocationals in that way, but I know that the state does allow for students who are completing their senior degree to do a, like, half, second half of their day at that type of school. I just want to know, like, what type of, if we're going to be looking into some type of relationship like that.
Sure. Thank you for that question. We've actually been meeting with the VPCC team at their Trade Center since before they even broke ground on the Trade Center, and so we've really been investigating ways that we can create those partnerships, given the structure of their program and the requirements held by the DOE, if we would like to offer credit for those classes, so for students to be able to offer, to, excuse me, earn credit towards their high school diploma. But until those things can be worked out, we are in discussions for looking at ways that they can modify their schedule of offering. There's just discussions on how that could look for them and how it could work for students. So sure, we are absolutely continuing those discussions for partnership.
If I may add a second thing. I had a meeting during my actual day job to look into changing this curriculum, because it doesn't make sense that we have a dual enrollment slot for AP classes and then other colleges. We forget about this instance of, I think workforce has been the term we've used the past, like, four years in the General Assembly, and we've yet to do any real tangible things for, like, divisions like ourselves, like, that have resources right next door, and we don't create pathways that allow students to, like, take a bus to somewhere that's closer than New Horizons, which, but this is a great opportunity to do that at New Horizons, but this is also some other way that we can be meeting the needs of our community. So thank you for that, and I hope to actually have more further discussions about this. To have, I think it's important to have stakeholders who, like, understand this from not only the people that I normally deal with at the DOE, but people that look around while the CDs programs rise up, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Are there any other comments, questions, Mrs. Henley?
Yes, I have two. One for Mr. Walker. So, it was a lot to digest, but that's one thing that stuck out when you were talking about the 85% of the students in K-5 who had done very well on the test, and that's very encouraging. I know there are some schools where they might be even higher, 90% or more. I'm concerned about the schools that did not make the 85, and that's what I'm looking forward to when you all bring back some strategies and things to help those schools, because I know 85, that's everyone, but there are a lot of challenges still.
That's very true. 85% of the students in grades K through 2nd met the spring proficiency literacy benchmark, and that's the Division average. The scores were just coming in and finalized Friday, May 31st, so we were scrambling as quickly as we could to get you at least the Division average so you could see that snapshot across. But yes, absolutely.
And this is an incredible achievement. We're actually above pre-pandemic strategies, and we attribute it to the strategies that we've implemented in the last two years, directly impacting those scores, and that's basically how we're teaching literacy. And so, thank you all the teachers, thank you everybody involved, this is a huge accomplishment.
My second question is, this is my jam as a parent. I'm not going, I do not want to go on the internet and look at all this, and, but, so my question is, and it might be for communications, when I go in as a parent of a ninth grader with a stack of the, and I don't even need it in color, I don't even need the little pictures, just the descriptions, is that an option for parents when they come in that, with guidance for the ninth, to say to that parent, "You can go online," or, "If you're not on online, here's this"? Because a lot of, when my children were in school, about four years ago, when I found out about things like this, it was from friends, not through guidance, not through, it was through word of mouth. So I'm just, I know things have changed a lot since then, but is this an option, or is this something that goes on the school website? It's easier than having to try to log in and look through things. That's just, I'm just speaking for the people like me.
So that's great. Thank you for sharing that. I can certainly work with our high school counseling teams to make sure we have enough hard copies in their offices to share with students and parents. And actually, we received feedback at our most recent Career Advisory Committee from one of the members of some great suggestions on where on our website, our WJCC website, we could also link this, and so we're going to be working with communications to see if we can get that going as well.
All right, thank you.
I think if I could just add, the increase in students actually having those experiences has been dramatic in the last two years, as you saw tonight, and the data really speaks to the strategies that have been used to involve students in a work experience that's going to help them in the future. So thank you to the team for all of the work on that, it's huge.
Other questions? Looking at this side of the room, it's been a little quiet, no?
It's sad.
Okay. Mr. Riffle?
I'm looking at, there's one on our board that has TEP backgrounds, I just care about a little bit more. I had an experience in high school, which was great to have, and my question is, are there any opportunities that, like, students are suggesting that we're not doing, and how are we implementing kind of more of, like, what they're asking into kind of our future? You know, we have great numbers, and you can totally, if there's an active involvement, people wanting to do these type of things, but there are things that, you know, clearly there are categories we aren't hitting, we hit seven out of the 12, right? So what are we?
So I think what often happens that takes some, a little bit more digging, on behalf of our team, and specifically our career coach, Ms. Sherri Thrift, does a lot of this work, is when she meets with students or students reach out looking for a certain type of internship, and sometimes that is a, it can be a very unique field, and then we spend a lot of time kind of hitting the ground in the community, trying to find a organization that will help support that student interest, and so we really encourage any community organization out there that would be interested at all. There is a step on our website that you can fill out a request to partner with us in this area, and the bigger database we can have of that, the easier we can help our students when they have some of these requests.
I guess the second follow-up question, what would be one of the opportunities, the high-quality work-based learning opportunities, that we are, like, if we could pick one that go towards the next, our Division, what would that be? Like, I think registered apprenticeship would probably be my pick.
Oh, one that we're not currently doing.
Right, right, yeah, that we're not currently doing, we should be kind of looking, I guess, like, I appreciate your last answer, but maybe I didn't answer my question, I didn't ask my question properly.
Apprenticeships are much more intense than some of the others, and I think that would also come with a need, just kind of brainstorming. We would need an increase in staff and teachers to be able to support some of that work for that kind of intense experience. It's not off our radar, it is, you know, we certainly want to keep growing. I think when you look at the list of the 12, mentorship is another one that we have had before, and it's something we could bring back depending upon, it's about hours, and sometimes students do a little bit more intense, and then it might fall into more of an internship, or it might fall into externship, so they can kind of weave in and out of the different styles when it comes to a few of those. So I guess that's my quick answer right now.
I appreciate, I know I put you on the spot, so thank you.
That's all right. I want to just commend you, Dr. Heron, and all the staff for the incredible work that is demonstrated in this presentation. It was very dense and 45 slides, so I just want to make sure we highlight, within this extensive presentation, the growth and the success that we have had in the last, especially in the last year, I would say, that's now coming to fruition, especially in K through 2. So I just want to highlight that and thank you all for the hard work. And it looks like we've met our 2028 goal, 85%.
In K-2 literacy. In K-2 Literacy, anyway.
Yes, yes. But yeah, so perhaps we will forge on with, with that goal. I, I also, just in the amount of time I've been on the board, I have, I have seen the growth in the CTE area. You know, career, technical, hands-on, work experience arena, and I think it's really incredible. It has not been around like it is like this for, for all that long. And the fact that it's grown as much as it has in such a short amount of time is, is pretty incredible. So, and you know, I know we have a lot of new board members, perhaps that, that growth isn't as visible because this is your first year. But, but yeah, it has been, it has been, even just since I've been here, which is also not that long. So yeah, if there are no other questions or comments, did you want to add anything to the?
Yeah, we have one more goal, Madam Chair.
And I wanted, I, I want to ask if anyone needs a five-minute recess and if we should do that now or before policies, perhaps between, between long presentations, I would suggest a five-minute recess if everyone's on board with that.
Look at the motion.
That way. Okay, five-minute recess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased to present some of the work that's been done under Goal Five this evening. I think Mr. Baker is leading off tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, and Dr. Heron. On the, on behalf of the Department of Human Resources and the Goal Five team, I'm pleased to be here to share the progress made this year under Goal Five. This goal centers on human capital and positive culture. Throughout the year, we have shared updates from Human Resources. And specifically in my presentation to the School Board on November 14th, we covered our recruitment efforts and employee compensation and benefits. While our goal was always to be 100% staff to begin, is to be 100% staff. To begin the 2023, 2024 school year, we were seven teachers short, or 99.5% staffed for classroom teachers on the first day of school. Tonight, I want to continue to focus on our collective work to Goal Five, Area 5.1, strengthen recruitment to attract highly qualified and diverse applicant pools. Anticipating another challenging year for the 2024, 2025 school year, we developed a staffing plan with our focus remaining 100% staffed on the first day of school. The staffing plan included analyzing teacher hiring trends by content area and level over a five-year period, evaluating teacher turnover trends, reviewed upcoming retirement eligibility and engaged in student teachers, engaged our student teachers directly. As a result of our analysis, we improved our, our intense survey process, which identified 124 teachers that were uncertain about their plans for next year and engaged with them on what it would take for them to remain. Of the 124 teachers that indicated they were uncertain, 90 are returning. Principals also engaged in stay interviews with instructional staff to help them understand their uncertainty about their employment status for next year. We also made 63 early offers to teachers and 34 accepted. Last year, we had 32 accept early offers. And previously, the number had been significantly less. An added challenge this year has been maintaining staffing. Since the first day of school, we've hired another 20 teachers and 101 support staff. And 94 new substitutes have also been added. Each of these numbers represents ongoing efforts by the Human Resources staff. HR has been able to meet this increased challenge while also preparing for the year ahead. We held job fairs on January 27th with 70, with 70 attendees and May 2nd with 24 teacher candidate attendees. On April 11th, we held an Alternative Pathways to Teaching night and we had 54 attendees. We've also held virtual job fairs on March 27th, April 17th, and April 24th. We are planning additional job fairs for the end of the school year this June. And additionally, we've also targeted 12 university fairs, which included three historically black colleges and universities. In January 2024, HR implemented a new applicant tracking system. Also in May this year, we've launched an electronic record system that enabled our employees to provide, to write our contracts to our employees electronically. And we also to onboard our new employees electronically. In August of this year, we will launch a new substitute management system. And these integration solutions will work seamlessly for our professional learning management and evaluation systems. These efforts also align with Goal Six, the organizational efficiencies and effectiveness. As part of our ongoing efforts to expand our teacher applicant pool, we received an approval from the Virginia Board of Education to partner with I Teach Virginia, an Alternative Pathways Teacher Licenseur Program. This residency, residency style, Grow Your Own program and innovative partnership provides eligible candidates with an affordable self-paced option for completing licensure requirements while they receive supervised classroom teaching experience. Our new teacher induction program, Launch, will also provide them with onboarding, support, mentorship, and personalized professional learning to enhance what they are learning in their courses. As part of the WJCC Tuition Assistance Program, we are proud to offer a full reimbursement option for eligible teaching candidates who serve our school division for three consecutive years. Phase one, the prerequisites for provisional completion costs $600. Phase two is the professional studies courses completion costs $600. And phase three, all renewable licensing requirements cost an additional $600. And the teachers sign a contract for year two with WJCC with the principal recommendation would cost, would be $625 reimbursement. And then the sign, the year three teacher signing the contract with the principal recommendation would be a reimbursement of $625. We currently have 33 employees who have submitted their interest in I Teach, in the I Teach program. Eight of whom are already actively completing their licensure requirements through the program. We also have 54 prospective applicants attend our Alternative Pathway information on April the 11th. And we are currently processing applications for both internal and external candidates. The IT program offers a residency style experience for career switchers. Additionally, this provides a Grow Your Own pathway for our current employees with a bachelor's degree that want a transition to a classroom teacher. Teachers hired through I Teach will be provisionally licensed and work on achieving full licensure while working to complete their program. Emily Carroll, our Director of Employment, will walk through Goals 5.2, develop a five-year total compensation strategy where WJCC School leads the region in employee salaries and benefits.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, and Dr. Heron. First, I was going to discuss with you the progress we've made over the past four years, which includes our upcoming school year on our bachelor's step. You can see the chart shows the progress we've made for upcoming, on step one for the upcoming year. Over the four-year period, we've moved from $47,242 to the upcoming year at $55,072, which represents a 16.57% increase on step one. This chart shows the progress we've made over the past three years and includes the upcoming year, and this is for our master's lane. So over the four-year period, we've moved from $48,834 to the upcoming year of $56,932, which represents a 16.58% increase. So you can see we're making progress in both of those areas and those, that progress does trickle down through the remainder of our salary scale. This past year, we added the Centerra HMO plan to our health insurance options to provide more options for our staff when it comes to their healthcare coverage. Additionally, we updated our 403B and 457 provider. This new option provides more transparency for our employees, greater investment monitoring, and dedicated support for WJCC staff, along with better performing fund options. This service additionally comes with FINPATH, which is a financial planning service for our staff. Employees can consult with a certified financial planner at no cost and have access to different opportunities to increase their financial wellness with regular offerings from the organization. Through a continued review of our tuition assistance program, we have also been able to increase our credits from six to nine each fiscal year. This program provides tuition assistance to teachers and staff that want to engage in continuing education. In 2022, 23, we had 110 applications for tuition assistance. And in 2023, 24, we've had 191. So people are continuing to take advantage of that program. On April 25th, we had an employee benefits fair. We had nearly 100 attendees with that, at that fair with a mix of staff from transportation, support, and teachers. Vendors from Anthem, Centerra, BRS, TCG, Legal Resources, and Aflac all participated in person and were available to answer questions. Presentations and Q and A from Anthem, Centerra, and BRS also took place. And we were able to record those communications to provide them to staff that weren't able to attend. We did provide multiple communications to staff to alert them of this opportunity and sent a calendar invite to all employees to ensure that they had awareness that this was coming. Again, we did record those video presentations and we've made them available on Insider for our staff. And we've also recently designed and launched a benefits frequently asked questions to provide detailed information about each different healthcare option where they can get easy access to information on the question they may have and then look across at all of the plan offerings. Looking forward, we are also getting ready to launch a benefits handbook that will give everyone a quick view on all of the benefits that are available to them as a WJCC employee, along with vendor contacts and Human Resources contacts in a readily accessible and one-stop location. Next, Ms. Elena Trot, our supervisor for organizational development and equity, has done much work under Strategy 5.3, Implement a Leadership Development, Development and Mentoring Program. And she's going to update you on that.
Good evening. The first component of Strategy 5.3 is centered on building the capacity of our division's leadership. This year, we've been fortunate to learn from several renowned leaders who shared their expertise and latest research on topics such as academic recovery, collaborative problem solving in school discipline, authentic leadership, and fostering trust and collective efficacy in teams. Our Leadership and Learning Series included collaborative sessions on employee well-being, engagement, and evaluation, sustaining momentum towards continuous improvement goals, blended learning, and leading inclusive school communities. All division administrators also participated in standard response protocol training last summer, with three pilot schools implementing new Raptor technology this spring. Finally, we are excited that the first aspiring administrators in our WJCC Old Dominion University Educational Leadership cohort are beginning their internships with us this summer and will graduate in December. The second component of Strategy 5.3 is centered on new teacher support and retention. Launch, our newly redesigned teacher induction program, has included enhancements to the onboarding process, mentor development, and strategically planned professional learning for new educators. Informed by research and aligned with the Virginia Board of Education's guidelines for new teacher programs, Launch is a multi-tiered, team-based approach to identifying and personalizing our new teachers' experience. One of those tiered initiatives is our Rise program, a five-session professional learning series designed specifically- a five-session professional learning series designed specifically for new special education teachers. This year, we engaged over fifty-five new teachers with just-in-time strategies and knowledge to assist them in meeting the unique needs of the students they serve. Additionally, nineteen of our provisionally licensed general education teachers attended the CERN Novice Teacher Academy at William &amp; Mary with four of our master teachers serving as co-facilitators in this statewide program. We are currently in the process of collecting feedback from the educators who joined WJCC this school year. However, preliminary responses have been favorable. One of the adjustments made this year was to schedule a school launch day in each building so principals and lead mentors could spend time fostering connections with and among new teachers at their schools before attending a larger division-wide event. Personalized learning days and monthly pull into port sessions led by our lead mentors were also well-received. With an overall rating of four point oh four out of five-point scale, the majority of new teachers reported feeling supported by their mentors. And a shout-out to our principals and assistant principals, with a weighted score of four point two five, the majority of new teachers reported feeling welcomed, understood, and supported by their school administrators. Current survey data indicates that seventy-four of the ninety-three teachers who completed the survey plan, who completed the survey, plan to return to teach at the same school next year. Four will be transferring to other schools within the district. And the teachers who will not be returning noted salary, lack of support, and student discipline as the top reasons for their decision. We will continue to utilize this perception data along with retention and performance measures to inform additional enhancements to our launch program next year. Under Strategy 5.4, Foster a Workplace Culture Where Employees Feel Valued, Well-Informed, and Supported Professionally. Our Communications Team continued the Heroes of Hope Recognition Program to honor employees' exceptional contributions in various roles throughout the division. And new this year, in conjunction with our launch program, we started the Soaring Superstars Initiative to highlight the talent and achievement of our newest educators in the division. Also, within this strategy and in response to feedback received through our Support Employee Forum, on November sixth, we hosted our first Support Employees Professional Learning Day with twenty sessions on supporting instruction, technology integration, communication, and stakeholder engagement. And with over three hundred registrations, there was truly something for everyone. Our teacher forum identified thrill share and professional learning as priority topics for this year's collaborative work. These teacher leaders assisted us in gathering feedback on ways we can continue to improve our professional learning experiences, including increasing choice and variety, balancing new content with time for collaboration, ensuring facilitators model interactive learning structures that can be utilized in the classroom, and planning professional learning series that go deeper into learning acquisition and application. We're also excited to begin hosting professional learning think tanks where all employees will have the opportunity to serve as thought partners on professional growth initiatives, including collaboratively designing innovative programs, participating in focus groups on problems of practice, providing feedback on new initiative implementation, and debriefing professional learning experiences to inform continuous improvement. Think tank sessions will be announced through the staff update email communication, allowing employees to serve where they feel most passionate. Under Strategy 5.5, Provide Professional Growth Opportunities For All Categories of Employees. This year, we've hosted over five hundred and nineteen professional development sessions within the division, yielding attendance of over ten thousand four hundred and seventy-five engagements. Though many classes are still in progress, as of last week, we awarded thirty-four thousand thirty-four recertification points, typically equating to one point per hour of learning, to our employees. We have also published twelve WJCC Professional Learning Corner additions. This is an internal publication highlighting free and low-cost professional development opportunities, higher education programs, book and podcast previews, and pro-on-the-go tips for teachers. We're also expanding the use of our Professional Learning Manager across the division so we look forward to capturing longitudinal data for all employee groups moving forward. Recognizing the need to proactively equip our educators for new state mandates and curriculum initiatives, we have already started charting our course for implementation next school year. Camp GPS is a professional learning series that will kick off this summer and provide teachers with early access to instructional resources, collaboration time with colleagues from across the division, and additional compensation. During our collaboration, learning, and planning days next school year, we will build upon the foundational theory and practice established in these sessions. School leaders will also provide teachers with job-embedded professional learning, support, and feedback to ensure we reach our ultimate destination of student success. Another new professional learning series, the STARS Para Academy, is designed to enhance our para-professionals' knowledge and skills in literacy, math, special education, multilingualism, student behavior, and building collegial relationships. The program also seeks to increase retention and provide a promotional pathway for these essential instructional support employees. STARS stands for Supporting Teaching and Relational Strategies, and participants will apply for one of two cohorts depending on their previous experience. Level-one para-professionals in our Rising Stars group can attend Skill Builder workshops and access online study resources in preparation for taking the Para-Pro Assessment. Upon receipt of a passing score report, the division will reimburse their testing fee and reclassify them as Level-two para-professionals, qualifying them for a higher position grade on the salary scale. Level-two para-professionals in our Shining Stars group may become interested in transitioning to teaching through one of our Alternative Pathway programs or want to serve as future trainers for onboarding new para-professionals in the division. Continuing with Strategy 5.5 is an exciting new initiative that has been in the incubation period this school year. You heard a little bit about coaching in our Goal One presentation earlier. Coaching cycles allow for differentiated professional learning and skill enhancement for all employees. The SEED Coaching Field Guide was collaboratively designed to create a shared vision and understanding of coaching systems throughout the division and develop the capacity of employees who can put on coaching hats to support other employees' growth. Starting with the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we will pilot the SEED Coaching Cycles with all year-two teachers through the launch program.
In addition to some of the planning initiatives shared in the previous slides, our Goal Five team is currently planning additional action steps for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These projects include an RFP for healthcare options, a total compensation study for all employees, continuing the pay equity review, and targeting pay adjustments for our teacher pay scale.
Additionally, we are excited to expand our launch program to include year-two teacher supports, design enhancements to our substitute orientation, and implement training courses in Canvas, and offer high-need professional learning, including training all child nutrition services and transportation team members on the use of positive language to redirect, remind, and reinforce student behavior, expanding our Certified Youth Mental Health First Aid Trainers from two to five mental health providers within the division, allowing for more sections to be offered to all employee groups, and implementing a comprehensive training plan for supporting the needs of multilingual students and families. That completes this evening's Strategic Plan Progress Report related to Goal Five. We're happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Trot, and Mr. Baker, and Ms. Carroll. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Henley, go ahead.
So I'm really good at reading the room, and I have the gift of discernment. And so I want to apologize to Mr. Walker, and I know Ms. Walters is gone. I led in with questions before compliments. And as a teacher, I know you're supposed to say all the positive things. So I am excited about what I see here, especially with the launch and all the new teachers we're getting, and all these, these are exciting initiatives. And I'm looking forward to seeing more. And I like to see the breakdown on the chart that you showed, or maybe she showed, I can't remember which one, about why they like to stay and things like that. I also sometimes go to my questions because I have a vision. So my vision just stuck out. But so when I'm asking questions, it's not that I'm not grateful for what, all the hard work and everything. So with the coaching, I know we're getting a lot of new teachers. I'm excited about that. I would like to know more about, do we have enough people to help them? Because when you increase the number of people, do we have enough people to support them? Because the chart did say that they liked working with their mentor. So I just want to make sure we have enough mentors. Yes.
Yes, we're very excited that we were awarded a twenty thousand dollar grant to support our MTSS initiative, which is going to allow us to equip coaches throughout the division next year. So we actually today finished a training with Thinking Collaborative, and they offer cognitive coaching, which is a coaching equipping workshop.
Thank you. And then my last one is something I've brought up every, every year that I've been in this seat. So when we have our job fairs, I would be interested in how, how we might use our teachers from the different colleges to be at some of the job fairs wearing their shirts so that if any applicants have questions for our teachers, there's a friendly face or something there so that they can, you know, just talk to someone else other than the people that are interviewing them. Or I've never been to a job fair, so I don't really know what goes on. But if they're, so I would like to, you don't have to answer this tonight, but I would like to just bring that up again, that that, in my vision, I feel like that might be helpful, and if we could just try it.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Riffle?
I'd like to go to the I Teach talk. Just, we didn't really get numbers on it. We just got numbers of people who attended. We know it was well-attended, but how many people in our division are using the program?
I think we may have that number as well, Ms. Trot.
We actually had another inquiry today. So it's thirty-four total have inquired, and eight are actively pursuing the program right now. So some of them just have some paperwork they need to submit to get moving.
Excellent. Thank you. And, oh, I'd like to agree with Ms. Henley. I would not be doing the job I have in my life if I didn't meet somebody who's doing the job. I love HR. They're great people, you know. But it's only the people you talk to who have problems. It's like important to hear from the role and what you're doing. I think that's kind of how we, how we rethink how we, you know, go for educators nowadays. It's a very different workforce, and that's just from the young guy in the room, I guess.
We certainly have everything in place to support teachers' assistants transitioning into teaching and others, as well as any new teacher coming into our ranks. That has been a huge focus of organizational development for the last two years. And Ms. Trot's done an excellent job. Even the launch program was the result of a team of teachers designing the program with Ms. Trot, which is, makes it really right on target of what teachers need to be successful. So I'm excited that over time, we'll see teachers staying because they feel supported here.
Is that it from the board for now? Yes, I also amend this team for all the initiatives and support mechanisms that have been put in place. It certainly looks like there are many opportunities to have robust support if you take advantage of it. And I think that's wonderful. I have one question about healthcare, and I don't know if, maybe it can't be answered tonight. But I know we ended up choosing to keep the healthcare situation, for lack of a better word, the way it was for this year in our, in our current budget. Are we looking to make a switch in the future? And is that something that's being signaled now?
Yes. I'm not sure which one's dealing with this.
Sure, we are engaged with the county about to do an RFP that will actually potentially be for a year from now. But like in the budget season for this winter, it might be something we present to you about some different options.
And even just with the Centerra plan, is that something that's, that is being promoted among staff?
Correct. And that's why we had the benefits fair, and the folks from Centerra were there. And that orientation is online, so our employees can see that now.
We're signaling that we might or will likely be making some kind of adjustments in the, in the near future.
Yes, and the adjustment, adjustment could be major as we go out for an RFP and really look at all of the options yet again, asking the right question, getting professional help to help us to do that well so that we can actually provide a quality plan at a reasonable cost.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to policies. Item eight point zero one, Review Revisions to Policy D L Payroll Procedures.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. First policy is DCL, payroll procedures piece. Couple of the policies this evening are within our general, what is going to become our general five-year review cycle. We have been precariously close to getting to that level, and we're excited to start some of those this evening. This particular policy is, has been updated with just a couple of formatting pieces to align with some of our other policies. No content changes per se, with the exception of the addition of line eleven and twelve, which talks about the superintendent authorizing, is authorized to create regulations to support the policy.
Thank you, Dr. Kieber. Are there any questions from the board on this one? Mr. Riffle?
What would be, like, someone give an example of what is not already covered in this code section or this section that the superintendent needs to then do on behalf of the board? I mean, not, because it, it's, I mean, from the VSBA, it says it's approved by the school board, and then there's no mention of superintendent at all in that procedure. So, and then we didn't just say like, oh, whatever we don't do, the superintendent is authorized to create. Yeah, that's where I'm kind of.
Sure. I think, I think in this particular case, it is, there is a regulation that goes with the payroll procedures. There is a current regulation, DLR. We have now cross-referenced that current regulation, and you're adding a line to the policy that says that the superintendent can create that regulation.
And Mr. Riffle, it's become our standard line to add this to almost every policy because if regulations are needed behind a policy, this gives, this is, creates the expectation that that will happen from the board.
I know, I'm not suggesting like, oh, take my power. I'm just more just like, this is the first, I've seen it. I think it's important to kind of highlight that for the viewing public, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
And you can see attached, there's the regulation, so you could see an example of what would be included in that. Okay, are we ready to move on? All right, item eight point zero two, Review Policy DM Cash and School Buildings.
As part of the five-year review cycle, we'll bring policies forward to you that we are not recommending any revisions to or enhancements to. This is an example of that. This policy just needs to be reviewed by the school board. We would ask that you do that this evening and then vote that you've reviewed it. It gives us another five-year window with this particular policy.
Okay. Doesn't look like there are any questions, so we'll move on. Eight point, go ahead. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. The next policy is Review Revisions to GBEF and JHCL Lactation Support. Currently, we have a single, single policy for lactation support. We are bringing forward the idea of splitting those two policies apart, having one that governs employees and another that governs students. The language in, so that's, that's one of the changes, that we would be splitting them apart for two separate policies. Generally, we don't like to add policies to the list. In this case, we do feel like it's appropriate to have a policy that governs employees and a policy that governs students. The, the language of the policy is now revised to include how long the, the person is able to have time in order to be able to express milk. It is now to the child reaches the age of one. So as a result of that, we've made revision to this policy.
Okay, Mr. Riffle?
Where does the, the age come from?
It comes from the U.S. Code, twenty-two. It comes from the U S Code, twenty-nine, U S Code twenty-one, two eighteen D.
I guess like, oh, I say, is this a standard practice in other workspaces? Are we just kind of following suit? Uh, this is kind of what I was asking.
Yeah, there there is there is a requirement that we provide an opportunity for lactation support for employees. And there's also that requirement for students as well.
Then I just want to be clear that then so we say facility because people work in other places that aren't schools. And then for students, it's just schools. So that's it's just it doesn't lie, isn't there's a I was I was like confused on why we said facility. And then I thought about it, so I'm just thinking about it for the public too. So thank you for clarifying both those.
Any other questions? No, okay.
Are there any questions regarding the change in language and the and the divide apart for J H C L, which would then be specific to students?
Right.
Right?
Any question, so.
Everybody's comfortable with that dividing them apart and having one for staff and one for students. Okay, terrific. The next one would then be G B E G, which is workers' compensation. This particular um policy is being revised in order to provide some additional consistency with our other policies. For your information, there's not a V S B A corresponding model policy. There is a fairly extensive regulation that has been in place and remains in place that spells out what the specifics are in terms of employees who might be in need of workers' compensation. So some of the information from lines nine through fifteen have been pulled from the policy and added to the the regulation.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one? Looks like we can move on.
Thank you. Next one is policy, I I think it's J E C A, right, admin admission of homeless children. This policy was last reviewed in February of twenty nineteen. Uh, we also included a review of the V S B A model policy. We are adding the line that we've added to several other policies over the course of the last few months regarding the superintendent being authorized to promulgate regulations. We have updated the associated regulation, J E C A, to align with some of the standard language that's provided in the V S B A model policy.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we can move on.
Policy J H C F student wellness was last revised in twenty eighteen. We have brought forward the suggested revision on lines twenty-three through twenty-eight regarding um meeting the requirements for the smart snacks rule, which is covered under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of twenty-ten. There are other some other Scrivener changes that were made in terms of capitalizations, et cetera. In addition, we made some edits to regulation J H C F. We created an appendix which talks about some of the nutrition standards and also included a form that outlines what those standards may be. The revised regulation is available in board docs for you as well.
Thank you. Um, board members, any questions? Okay, let's move on.
Policy J I C A, school uniforms was last revised in twenty nineteen. There is not a corresponding V S B A model policy. Uh, the current policy that we have in place is in line with guidelines that were adopted by the V D O E in nineteen ninety-six. We're not recommending any content changes. For your knowledge, there is one of our schools now, an elementary school, that does currently use a dress code. Excuse me, uses uniforms as part of the dress code. Uh, there's also an opt-out option in place for families in that particular building.
Any questions? This um policy simply allows a school to implement a uniform policy.
Correct.
They would like to.
It is a permissive policy.
And a and a principal who wanted to abolish a a uniform policy could do so on their own?
They could with conversation through school leadership. And subsequently, we would want to ensure that it's communicated and and shared widely.
But it does not require board approval to abolish.
To move away from a uniform, no, not not in my read of it.
Any other questions? Okay, oh, sorry, Mr.
What what school does use uniforms?
James River.
James River.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, moving on.
The last policy this evening to review is policy E B C D, school closings. It was last revised in February of twenty nineteen. Uh, the new content that was added is also included in the V S B A model policy. We've updated cross-references. We've also created a regulation, E B C D, to solidify the procedures, especially for employees when it comes to school closings and their work hours, et cetera.
Any questions from the board on this one? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kever. So these uh policies will appear on a consent agenda at the next meeting. Okay, so we can now move on to our one action item tonight, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Haller?
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseing?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordego?
Aye.
All right, board member comments. I will, can I start with you, Mrs. Hunley?
Sure. Um, I was excited to see some community-related events with the Relay for Life that happened this past Friday, and we had seven schools and our mascots got to do the walk, so that was exciting. The Williamsburg Community Foundation um awarded a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in scholarships to ninety-seven of our three local high schools, so another community support. Um, Mr. Steve Prince was at um Stone House doing a collaborative activity with chalk with the students in fifth grade, another way that the community is involved with our students and and supporting them. A lot of wonderful things are happening for our students academically. I know I did not go to any of the um scholarship awards that were at the different high schools, but I hear lots of money was given out, so that is um a wonderful way to um, you know, award students for reward them for hard work and and in their schooling. Also, there was the, I missed the honors projects. I heard we had fourteen students that completed that. And if you remember from last year, I was talking about, that's like a like a dissertation, the things that they have to do. And I heard one of my former students did a project on making vaccines um not as scary for little kids. She did a whole project on that. Um, fine arts, um, I think they're winding down now. The three of us went to um DJ Montague for their band and uh strings. And I'm seeing a lot of posts of students that won accolades for for those um fine arts. Athletics, I don't feel as confident with that. I'm not sure. I know we're winning things. We're still with some sports that are just went to states, I think, in track. So I'm hoping somebody will let me know how we're doing so I can post some of the wonderful things going on with our students that way as well. We had a wonderful retirement banquet. It's always bittersweet when you you're um, people are moving on to greener pastures. Hopefully, some will come back to to um to sub as well. Definitely, um, all of these accolades and things that we're doing has to do with, I know, with all the staff that makes our students successful, whether you've been teaching less than three years, seventeen years, or forty years. And I know that I have seen with my own eyes even teachers at those three levels that were excellent in their craft. So um, I have had some uh feedback about the salary scale, and I'm glad to see that we will be working on it because um one small group um and I'm just speaking for myself, one small group of of teachers um were not um, did not receive three percent. And um, so just me, uh, that is hard, that's hard for me because all teachers are valued and I and I hope that they understand that, that it was not an intentional anything like that. And I hope that we can fix some of that for moving forward. Summertime is coming up. I know everybody's excited. There's a countdown now. It used to be counted down by days, minutes, and hours. Now it's by Mondays. I'm looking forward to all the celebrations with graduation and the the parade and things like that. And um, even for us, everybody in this room, I hope we all take time out to just rejuvenate, refresh, because before you know it, we'll be sitting here again and it will be getting ready to start the next new year. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mr. Hoseing?
Thank you. Um, I I want to thank and congratulate all of our employees who are retiring. Not that I want to see them go, um, but to thank them for their service and everything that they've done for our uh community and for our uh students. And I hope that they take up the Dr. Heron's um request to come back and substitute uh as much as possible. Dr. Heron took some of my uh wind out, a little bit out of my sails because I was going to congratulate the Jamestown High School and Virathon team also. I saw that and uh it was brought to my attention, so I wanted to thank them and congratulate them and wish them good luck uh when they compete. I believe it's the end of July uh when they go to uh New York. If there's anything that we can do to to congratulate them, thank them, um, that I think that'd be a great thing to uh to do for them. Uh, I was talking to someone today, and I guess they won the international competition back in two thousand seventeen. And they are going to, like I said, they're competing again. There's supposedly going to be over three hundred teams there this timeframe. So um, good luck to them and and hopefully they can bring back a a trophy for our community. I wanted to uh touch on two different issues that have been uh going on in our community uh at this timeframe. And I'm concerned at this point with both of these issues because it appears to me that no one is sticking up for our teachers or our administrators. There's been two separate reports that our teachers and our administrators have indirectly been called racist and discriminators simply for doing their jobs. And yet there I haven't seen a lot of support for those teachers or those administrators. And I want to say tonight, I'm here for you. I'm supporting your teachers. I'm supporting the administrators on these issues. The first issue came from a recent report from the Village Initiative, which has been to denigrate our teachers and administrators for the discipline they have imposed on our students. They have been attacked for allegedly punishing black students at a disproportionate rate. Now, I'm curious to know why or how this theory is raised. Now, don't get me wrong, I've seen the numbers um and but numbers can be deceiving. The premise of the attack is that saying that our teachers and administrators are racist and discipline black students disproportionately more when compared to white students. Do we really believe that our teachers and administrators are going out of their way to discipline black students more? If that is the case, please do more than just spout off numbers. Provide specific names, provide the dates when our teachers, our administrators have not um disciplined white students, but have disciplined black students for the same issue. Please provide those dates and so that we can look into those issues. I'll give you my word right now. I will look into that and I'll make sure the administration looks into uh those issues. But the issue is just don't come in here and spout numbers and claim racism. Racism is more than just numbers. And the numbers could in fact show a parental or societal issue, not a school issue, when looking at the disciplinary numbers in our school. These same claims are being made in our society today about incarceration rates and the same lack of supportive evidence with those issues that are being raised. Now, this group, the Village Initiative, last year said that or tried to propose that black students learn best from black teachers and that our community needed to hire more black teachers. Until it was pointed out that the school with the highest percentage of black teachers had the lowest percentage of black students passing the um passing their exams. So that argument didn't work last year simply based on the numbers that they proposed, and it's not going to work again this year. The next attack towards our teachers and administrators is being accused by the city of Williamsburg of not properly teaching Williamsburg students, but only teaching James City County students, which is allegedly evidenced by Williamsburg students doing poorly on state test scores. This is presumed again by simply looking at numbers without looking at any other factors that might be attributable to the numbers. The premise that is being espoused is that our teachers are discriminatory, refusing to teach properly teach Williamsburg students and are only concerned with teaching James City County students. Thus, Williamsburg students' test scores are lower than James City County student test scores. There has been no attempt to look at other factors as to why the numbers are such. The easiest thing to do is to blame teachers without looking at what the numbers actually mean. From what I've been told, all students are being taught by the same teachers, have the same access to materials, have the same opportunity to learn. So why are some students learning and others are not? Unless someone can show which specific teachers are refusing to teach Williamsburg students and are not giving Williamsburg students books to use or depriving them of the same opportunities, then the issue is not with the teachers and it's not with the school system. Again, if anyone would conduct a deeper analysis of the actual issues and provide specific examples, specific teachers who are blatantly not teaching certain students, the school system could look into this. But it appears as stated before that it is more likely a parental or societal issue and not an education one. In each of these situations, I support our teachers and our administrators. I, for one, do not believe that our teachers or administration are disciplining black students disproportionately, nor are they refusing to adequately teach Williamsburg students. Could there be a specific case or two that needs to be looked into? Possibly. There is no perfect system out there. There's no perfect group out there. There's always going to be one or two people that are going to have a racial bias or racial issues with someone. That's within any profession, but that's not in our education uh profession. But this is not a systematic issue with the school system. Until someone can show specific examples and numbers that are that actually show that our teachers and our administrators are in fact racist or discriminatory, these negative attacks need to stop. Quit throwing out numbers when they haven't been adequately reviewed. Now, finally, I want to address an elephant that has been in this room for about a year, which no one cares to address or no one is brave enough to address. And I'm going to sort of preface this by saying, I am one of seven. So when the press looks at this and says something tomorrow or when other organizations look at this and says something tomorrow, this is one board member making a comment, not the school board. This is not the school administration making a comment. This is one school board. So bring the comments to me and I will take care of them accordingly. I ask at both the Board of Supervisors and the City of Williamsburg to quit playing games with our children, with our employees, with this school system and make a determination ASAP as to what this school division is going to look like moving forward. The more you delay your decision, the more you hurt our children and our employees. Quit using the school system as a pawn in your political game. I don't know what each side is trying to get out of this game, and frankly, I don't care. What I care about are our children and our employees who are wondering what is going to happen in a few years, which they have no control over. Williamsburg, you said you were conducting a review of this issue to help make this determination. Well, you have that review in your hand. Nothing is going to change from it. So make a decision on the information you have, that information that you asked for. So make a decision on the information you have, that information that you asked for, and quit showboating in public, demanding that we as a school system answer your questions on the issue I mentioned earlier, but then never sending us the questions to answer. You claimed you were going to send us questions about a month ago and demanded that we provide answers to this alleged discriminatory issue, but we have seen nothing yet. At least I have seen nothing yet. I don't know if anyone else from the school board has seen anything. I don't know whether the school administration has seen anything. But a month ago approximately, we were told we were going to get questions that they wanted answers. We've received nothing. This is showboating in the press and it needs to stop with because it's hurting our children, it's hurting our employees. Again, this is an attempt to score political points and to give you a potential excuse to leave the school division. Quit trying to come up with reasons why you should or shouldn't leave. You have your report that should be good enough for you to make a decision. The more you showboat, the more our children suffer, the more our employees suffer. And you are only only uh make things worse when you come in and a dramatic or make a very dramatic last second decision. I'm asking you to please stop the games, take pride in your position and do what you were elected to do and make this hard decision for the city of Williamsburg. I'm also uh making a uh an appeal to the Board of Supervisors. You have been dealt a bad hand. This is not something that you wanted to deal with, but you also have the responsibility to your constituents that elected you. You have a responsibility to the students that are within James City County. So you may need to make a decision on this also so that we as a school board, we as a school administration can properly move forward in order to provide our students and our teachers with the best education that they can receive. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Hosein. Mr. Riffle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um I have very few things to say. Also, just a lot going on there. Uh yeah, I'm I just want to reflect on the retiree dinner. Um I just I got to spend my evening with Mabel from um from DJ Montague. Uh and it was just, I don't know, I touched us to Mabel and I was kind of jokingly, but I was very thankful for her support staff um as I grew up in high school and stuff and and I just shared it with Mabel and it was just a great experience for me to have with our team. It's it's something we don't get to do as much as board members is to be with our community and with students and and it's it's very limited because of code sections in Virginia and I understand that, so it was it was just fun to do that. And I would express to my board members to try to do that at those type of events. Um it's important for us to engage with, even though people are leaving, um and celebrate them and to be a part of that, so. Uh it takes a little detachment from sitting with some of you now. Um and I think I if I see Mabel around, I'll ask her how she's doing, so. Um but the thank you to everyone's presentations tonight. The goals and strategic values we've been seeing over the past couple of weeks is something I would like people to look back on to, um especially today's presentations. Uh we are making strides here as a division. Uh we are doing things that are as as best as we can without having um some of our neighboring schools have academies and things that are set up for ways for us to functionally do some of the stuff we don't have. And our division has made do with, I think, the best of their resources. Um and so that's all I have to say. I'm just thankful for the administrators and and the school boards before me who have allowed us to get see this growth um into this point. I hope we can hit ninety percent. Uh eighty-five is, you know, moving there. I I'm a believer with Dr. Kozas who says that I think we should start for higher goals um for the reasons that we should, you know, take that in step, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Chen?
I was going to um just give a brief um update on some things. Sorry, I just.
Would you like me to come back to you?
No, it's okay. So I I went to the honors program presentation um that that um Ms. Hunley talked about. Okay. I was very impressed by the students um who presented. We watched a um we watched a video presentation. Um they had these amazing original passion projects. Um it was really um inspiring. I would encourage all of my school board members to watch that video um if you haven't had a chance to yet. Um these are students who are receiving an advanced study diploma and honor seal. I'm sure that um we will see them and celebrate them at graduation along with all of our students. There were, just to mention a few things, there were app apps that were created um to help with various issues that they saw. Um original songs, children's books, there were um diverse voices and histories and perspectives that were explored um that typically are not talked about or taught at school. So I got to learn um about all of these these really interesting and student-driven research uh projects. The other the other brief thing that I was going to share about tonight was just to shout out to our music teachers because um I don't think I've specifically recognized them and in the last month or so, we've received so many invitations to band, orchestra, choir um performances. And um just throughout the year, I've noticed um so many students who have been recognized in music um for making assessments, making regionals, making it to all states, representing um our district. And so that that really is a credit to the students and their dedication to music, but also our music teachers are very inspiring. They go above and beyond. And and they they spend many years with their students. And um yeah. I think I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Kozas?
Yes, ma'am. Just a few short things. Um I really like appreciate all the work that the STAMP did on the strategic plan because that is absolutely critical to having a successful program and providing an education uh to all our students in the division. Strategic plan is paramount. In addition, I'd like to look forward to the additional discussion on the possibility of adding lacrosse to our repertoire of sports. And then finally, uh June fourteenth is graduation, so I would like to personally uh congratulate all the graduates in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kozas. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you. I thought I was going to get to go on summer vacation. The words that were just said earlier in this meeting again are not reflective and of our division. And there was so much to unpack and I um can't even attempt to fact-check what was said here. But just at a high level, one, the Village Initiative data is WJCC data that we provide to the state that they then pull from the VDOE website. So if there's concerns about the data and what the data is showing, then that circles right back around to us in our division and that is that is questioning the integrity and the competency of our principals that are collecting the data as things happen as that that gets reported into our data analysts that are providing that to the VDOE. And so as a board member, speaking for myself, I know the level of professionalism that we have from our building principals, from our teachers and from our central office that works on all that data and provides that. I think that's also questioning whether or not the Virginia Department of Education then can adequately take our data. And so I think that is then questioning a whole bunch of things. And so I think just for a fact-checking perspective, all the data in the Village Initiative is data that we provide and they pull from the VDOE website. And so if you actually were to go in and to read it and you look at the sources, the Village Initiative information is put together by William and Mary professors who all have PhDs and this is what they do is their job is data and putting together reports. And so it is just throwing into question and going after lots of people in the community. Many of those people have children in WJCC. If you were to ever go to a Village Initiative um meeting, you would see that it is a cross-section of ages, races, ethnicities. Political, right? It's it's something that people are focused on children. Part one. Part two, you cannot say that you support teachers when you just said something that is so offensive to black teachers and creating a separation between black teachers and white teachers. And from the conversations I've had with our teachers in our community, what you're saying does not is not reflective of them. And they would be horrified that a board member just went after one of their colleagues. And I find it particularly abhorrent because you are sitting next to a black teacher who from WJCC who is your mentor. And so what you just said goes after the work that she has done in the classroom for over twenty years. It goes after all of the work that all the other teachers, the way that our teachers are collaborating with each other. And that is not helpful and it is not true and it is not what is occurring. And then third, to go after veiled James River Elementary School, which I believe is the one that had more black teachers, what we were talking about. We're talking in terms of black teachers, two teachers, three teachers. And James River Elementary School has a whole lot of other things that make it one of the schools that we focus on and that has and their scores and have nothing to do with the black teachers there. That is a school where if you were to visit and to spend time there, you would see how all of the teachers are collaborating and working together to ensure that all of those students are successful, regardless of all the different things that are happening. And on a visit at James River, when you start talking to the teachers, the challenges that those che those students have cut across race, ethnicity, English language learners. There is so much that's going on there. And so to actually spend time talking to teachers and administrators, not with an agenda, but with an open mind to actually listen to what's happening and not trying to push a narrative, you would have a much different perspective. Lastly, the teachers would be highly offended that there is a perception or that you're putting out there that there's some set of teachers that want to teach James City County students more than they want to teach City of Williamsburg students. Again, that is not what our teachers sign up to do. That is not how our teachers behave and that is not how they work together. And as a board member, I would encourage you and any other board member to really spend time and be with those teachers to understand how they are trying to educate all children. We ju and we just sat through almost an hour, a one forty-five page presentation, another thirty-page presentation. So seventy-five pages of presentations where they have talked about the outcomes, all of the things that they are doing to wrap around new teachers, wrap around our curriculum, to make sure that all children are succeeding. When you actually speak to teachers, they talk about the individualized instruction that they do for each and every kid to make them learn. We just saw that eighty-five percent of our kids are passing in the K through two, which is where we have put literacy. Again, what you're saying is not supportive of teachers. Do not put that out there. It is not true. What you said is not supportive of teachers. And so yes, I am speaking directly to you because as a board member, I am not going to sit here and let you say those things about the people that are sitting in the room next to you, about our educators. Because when we say these things from a board perspective, we are setting the tone of the culture and what is acceptable. And to have board members sitting here and saying things that are denigrating teachers, that are denigrating our central office staff is then setting a tone that trickles down. And as a board, we need to be better than that and higher than that. So yes, and this time I'm not talking generally, I'm talking specifically. That is not representative. What I had planned to say today, and I think is actually really apropos at the moment, is I had a wonderful opportunity to go to Norwich Elementary School's field day. And I think that experience actually speaks to who we are as WJCC and what we want to be. Because at Norwich Elementary School, which is one of our Title I schools, that has a very diverse school population with lots of needs, we had um Ray Vaughn, um Patrick, who was the WJCC Rookie Teacher of the Year in two thousand twenty-two and is the physical education teacher there. He put together an amazing field day. They had fifty different activities for the kids. They had parent volunteers that were staffing each of them. They put little tags on the back of the kids so that they could get checked off of every station they went to and the only requirement was you had to be with your buddy. And so as you look at children before all this adult junk gets to them, little kids holding hands, again, all races, ethnicities, socioeconomic statuses, running around from activity to activity, loving each other, having fun. My one of my favorite kids that I kept popping up was there's there was a young, there was a little, this was in the K through two group. This little girl and um she has taken on a child who's part of the inclusion classroom who's autistic. And wherever he is, she is and she just stands over him and she was not letting go of his hand. And they went from activity to activity. She waited there with him. And just to see our the other kids from the inclusion classrooms being able to participate, how our team made accommodations for them. So if it was too noisy, putting headphones on them, making sure that they had that opportunity. And so that is the best of what WJCC has. You have a teacher who showed up at five thirty in the morning to make sure that all the fifty stations were set up. You had parents who actually stayed to do a double shift. So they did the three through five, the third through fifth grade in the morning and then they stayed over lunch and they were there for K through two in the afternoon. You had children that were in a safe place where they could run free. Their only requirement was stick with your buddy. And no kid is looking at black, white, rich, poor, English language learner, um differently able. It's just kids having fun. A PTA that has raised over thirty thousand dollars that paid for the bounce houses, that paid for the ICs and a community that comes together. And so what I would offer that for us as a board and as board members is to really be focused on what are we here for? And that is to support our students, to support our teachers and to really come together as a community that is supportive and is not doing, I wouldn't even call it dog whistles, saying very inflammatory things purposefully that pushes a certain narrative that is divisive. And that is not how this this board has functioned up until this stage. And I think I'll speak for myself as a board member, that is not a board in a way, in a culture that we need to have because we are setting the tone. And so if we're and how one board member that's going to continue to be divisive, that is not the tone that we set. And that is not reflective of who we are and we are setting a horrible example for the teachers, the staff, central office and for our children, our students. So I'll conclude my comments there.
Well, either you're trying to be divisive against me or you didn't just didn't understand the comments that I made. The comments were that Williamsburg, the city, the co the comments from the uh members of the uh Williamsburg um council, they are the ones who are being discriminatory against our teachers. I'm sticking up for the teachers. It's the Village Initiative that is calling our teachers racist by disciplining allegedly black students much more than white students. And they are the ones that are being racist, not me. And I'm sorry that you misunderstood.
Thank you, Mr. Hosein. Board member comments are not.
Quit smiling at me too.
Mr. Hosein?
Well, I'm sorry. You're not you're not going to say anything to Ms. Donner? You're not going to say anything to Ms. Donner?
Mr. Hussein, please calm down.
Okay.
I said something, because you said something about her smiling at you. Didn't say, "I let you have a rebuttal," which I probably shouldn't have done. I let you do that. This is not what board member comments are for. This is, I, I just, I don't understand. I don't understand why there's intentional divisiveness. I understand some of the points you were trying to make, but this is, this is just not the way to go about it. And I would suggest that you spend some more time with doing some research and actually digging into data. I do believe that we recently had a presentation from Dr. Brown that discussed discipline, student discipline, that discussed apparent disproportionality. There was no blame that was laid on teachers per se, but it has been acknowledged and it is something that the division is, is working to remedy. And I would, I would just suggest perhaps further research and perhaps talking with fellow board members or myself, make sure that some of the things that are stated as facts are indeed facts. The, Dr. Herron and I did in fact receive a letter from City Council just yesterday. And we are the people who will be responding on behalf of the board and the school division. And if you had asked me about that before the meeting, I could have told you that.
Since he had a rebuttal, the one thing I will say, you can't control black bodies and you can't control whether or not I smile at you or not. Don't do it.
Okay, all right. That's enough. We might have to eliminate board member comments from the agenda. I don't know, because I think this is, this is not the purpose. The purpose is to highlight the experiences that we've had in the school division and talk about our involvement in the schools and the wonderful things that we're seeing and the, and the things that are, are being presented to us and commending hard work. So I'm sorry, I'm not sounding very eloquent right now. I had also some things I was going to say. There, there are ways to address issues when there, it's not, we're not a flawless organization. There are going to be times where we encounter things that are problems and our job as a board is to try to rectify them. We're not supposed to attack each other. And I'm going to, I'm going to wrap this up because I, I think adjourning the meeting sooner rather than later is probably the best thing there. Yeah, I think we need to adjourn the meeting. So I'm going to close board member comments. Our upcoming events. GED, ISAEP completion ceremony will be on June fifth at five PM at Lafayette High School. I believe the whole board is attending that. WJCC Schools 2024 Exceptional Games on June sixth at ten thirty AM at Jamestown High School. Duke of Gloucester Street Senior Parade will be on June twelfth at five thirty PM along Duke of Gloucester Street. School Liaison Committee will be on June thirteenth, eleven thirty AM, room three hundred here in the annex. And then we have Lafayette High School, Warhol High School, and Jamestown High School graduation ceremonies at nine AM, one PM, and five PM respectively, all in the Kaplan Arena at the College of William &amp; Mary. And a policy committee will meet on June twentieth at eight thirty AM virtually. Upcoming meetings. Closed session on June eighteenth will start at five thirty PM here in room three hundred, followed by our regular meeting at six thirty PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. We will have a special call meeting on June twenty-seventh at eight fifteen AM here in room two hundred, simply to approve any personnel that have been hired after the eighteenth. And then we'll have closed session on July ninth at three thirty PM here in the annex, followed by a work session and action items at four thirty PM also here in room three hundred of the annex. Our agenda is set for the next regular meeting and this meeting is adjourned.